I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2015 at 6:30 roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Here.
Mr. Terrapanny.
Here.
Mr. Banther.
Here.
Mr. Seaver.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Milton Smith. Is he in the audience? Uh, not. Is he? Is he back there?
No.
I didn't see him. So we'll ask our attorney if he would do the invocation. Will everyone please stand, remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following it?
Lord, we gather as those seeking to improve our community. Whether or not we always agree, we are committed to making Tarpon Springs a better place to live for all of its citizens. Give us open minds, generous hearts, caring attitudes, and the courage and wisdom to make a difference. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Before I go to public comments, I just state, for those that might be here, item number 20, the site plan for Bay Shore Heights, they will be deferred at that, when it comes up. So it won't be discussed this evening. But anyone here that would like to have public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening, come forward, state your name and address for the record. Give it up to four minutes.
Peter Lackus, 514 Ashland Avenue. And here we are again. Another senseless gun tragedy. Every week, we continue to see on the news and hear and through people and see in the paper, people senselessly cut down by gun violence. Just recently, if you read in the paper yesterday, one of our Tampa Bay Buccaneers, his brother, at seventeen, was killed. This is reaching all over. Our children, our mothers, our fathers, our uncles, our grandparents, everybody is at risk in this current culture of that we need to have a gun and pack one. And currently, our legislatures in Tallahassee are considering allowing guns on college campuses. This is insane. We, as a body, need to let our legislators know that we are the voters, not the NRA. We need to let them know that we need sensible gun control laws. And we cannot keep allowing people to have access to weapons who are not capable of handling them properly, or don't have the mental capacity to continue or to not do these types of things. So every time there's a meeting here and there's been somebody shot and killed through senseless gun violence, I will continue to speak out and try to motivate some of the rest of you to contact your legislators, contact your congressmen, to let them know that we've had enough of this. Because we're the ones at risk. Us, our childrens, our family. And it's kind of ironic, because we send millions and millions and billions of dollars overseas, and we spend countless amount of money and hours and energy to protect us from outside forces, yet we within our own country are killing more people than have been killed in Iraq, Afghanistan, 9/11, any of these places combined, in one year. In one year. So, again, I pray for those parents and family members who have gone through the grief of losing a loved one. And all I can say is, think of yourself in their position, and what you would do if that was you. And if that is something that motivates you to take action prior to that event ever, ever occurring. Thank you.
Tim Kafalas, 205 Leafwood Drive, Tarpon Springs. Last week, Tarpon Springs lost a treasure. To my wife, Julie Papoutis-Kafalas, he was Uncle Herc. To others, he was Dr. D., more formerly known as Dr. Themesticles DiAmandis. He encouraged my wife to become a nurse. He encouraged many others to seek medical careers as well. He also was determined to preserve Tarpon Springs' future and heritage through photos that he had taken for so many years. I suggest that if you have not read the article online today in the Tampa Bay Times, "It's the Last House Call for Tarpon Springs' Beloved Dr. D.", that you should take time to read and reflect on Dr. D.'s impact on Tarpon Springs. Dr. D. had a unique charisma that we all grew to know and appreciate and to respect. He was truly a treasure. I hope that in coming weeks, this commission finds a way to honor Dr. D., Uncle Herc. I also want to encourage the hospital to remember Dr. D. and consider his impact on the hospital in some manner. He dedicated his life to helping people, and without a handful of dedicated people like him, there would be no hospital here. Thank you.
If there are no other public comments, we'll go to a proclamation. Excuse me. First one is item number one, World Pancreatic Cancer Day. And this proclamation reads, "City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas in 2015, an estimated forty-eight thousand nine hundred sixty people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and forty thousand five hundred sixty will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second by 2020. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just seven percent. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally late-stage, seventy-three percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of that diagnosis, while ninety-three percent of the pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas approximately three thousand deaths would occur in Florida in 2015, whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh-most cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world. Whereas there will be an estimated three hundred sixty-seven thousand new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed globally in 2015. Whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of the City of Tarpon Springs are enhanced as the direct result of the increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection causes and effective treatments. Now, therefore, I, David O. Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby designate November 13th, 2015, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day." And I know Ms. Susie Swenson is here, as well as the network members. I have this for you. You can pick it up and then say something.
I'll let Danny grab it.
Danny, you grab it.
Mayor Archie and Commissioners, thank you so much for this proclamation. My name is Susie Swenson, and I am accompanied by some members of our affiliate, from the Tampa Bay affiliate of the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network. Some of us are survivors, some of us are family members that have lost a loved one, and we have friends and other family members here today. So on behalf of all of us, we thank you for what you have done for this proclamation. Just real quickly, a little bit about myself. I am a survivor. Twenty-two months ago, I was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. And if you believe the statistics that you just read, Mayor Archie, that the seven percent survival rate of five years, I have a seven percent chance to live another three years. These are the staggering statistics. You also mentioned that pancreatic cancer is the fourth-leading cause of cancer-related deaths in the United States, on track to become the second-most deadly cancer by 2020. In the state of Florida, pancreatic cancer is number two, is the second-most deadly cancer causing deaths, and on route, or on track to become the number-one cancer-related death in the state of Florida. That's amazing. That's a staggering statistic. Our goal is to stop that change, and hopefully to reverse it. Our slogan is "Wage Hope." We all wage hope for many different things. But I think the one thing that we all have in common is we wage hope that researchers will find an early detection for pancreatic cancer. There is no early detection today. We also wage hope that the researchers will find a cure for pancreatic cancer. And finally, what I'd like to do is to invite you, next Saturday, November 7th, our major fundraising annual event is going to be held in St. Petersburg at Albert Whitted Park at eight in the morning. And we invite everyone in this room, this building hallway, to join us and help us fight against this deadly cancer. And finally, on November 13th, World Pancreatic Cancer Day, we're purple. Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do and the network do in terms of raising awareness as far as pancreatic cancer is concerned. Is there any public comments on this item? Then we'll next go to the next proclamation, which is Veterans Day. I'll give y'all the The next item we have is proclamation for Veterans Day. And this proclamation reads, "Whereas on Veterans Day, we pay tribute to the service and sacrifice of men and women who in defense of our freedom have bravely worn the uniform of the United States. Whereas America's veterans answered the call when asked to protect our nation and stood tall in the face of great danger, enabled our nation to become the greatest force for freedom in human history. Members of the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and Coast Guard have answered a high calling to serve and have helped secure America at every turn. Whereas our country is forever indebted to our veterans for their quiet courage and exemplary service. We also remember and honor those who laid down their lives in freedom's defense. These brave men and women made the ultimate sacrifice for our benefit. On Veterans Day, we remember those heroes for their valor, their loyalty, and their dedication. Whereas with respect for and in recognition of the contributions our service members have made to the cause of peace and freedom around the world, now therefore, I, David O. Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2015, as Veterans Day." I don't see Tommy around. So we'll make sure that he gets this proclamation. Are there any public comments on that? Seeing none, we'll go to our presentation. It's item number three, this Historical Society Jitney. Start panning.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Cindy Terrapanny, and I'm a member of the Board of the Tarpon Springs Area Historical Society, and I'm honored to be here today with the Jitney Committee. If y'all would stand, I'm Boogie Palmer, Anita Protos, and Kenny Henderson, and other board members, Linda Colianis, Peggy Prestus, Dennis Garvey, Angela Smurlis Becker, Athena Clemens Sardulus, and Ramona Pletcher. So we have quite a strong group here tonight to present this. All of us who are fortunate to live in Tarpon Springs know how unique Tarpon Springs is, and it's unique in a lot of different ways. Well, the story of the Tarpon Springs Jitney is another one of those unique stories. About three years ago, a chance encounter that my husband had with Hercules Ypsilanti was the spark that led Mr. Ypsilanti to donate this 1926 jitney to the Historical Society. Some of you may know this, but back in the 20s and earlier, there were many jitneys that traveled around Tarpon Springs, and they were kind of created by the Greek immigrant entrepreneurial spirit who saw a need for some sort of transportation. Not everybody had cars then, obviously. And so they created these jitneys that traveled the streets of Tarpon and took people to downtown, to the sponge docks, back and forth, to shopping, to wherever they needed to go. We believe that the jitney that was donated to the society is the last jitney in Tarpon Springs. And I've been saying that for about three years, and nobody's contradicted me yet, so I'm pretty sure that it's true. The jitney stayed in Mr. Ypsilanti's garage in Greettown since 1951. In fact, with the jitney was the 1951 Car-Tac. Mr. Ypsilanti has never wanted to sell the jitney. In fact, his father had begged him not to sell it, made him promise not to sell it. And although he had many offers, he, as I said, luckily connected up with the Historical Society. And in December 2012, 2012, the jitney was donated to the Historical Society. In September 2013, we selected the Hancock's to restore the jitney. And we embarked on the biggest fundraising project we have ever done. And to date, we've raised well over $35,000 to cover the cost of the restoration, future insurance, gas, a little cushion if something should happen, God forbid, knock on wood to the jitney, let to cover it for time immemorial. In December 2013, the jitney was moved from that garage down in Greettown to the Hancock's to begin the restoration. And as I said, we embarked on a fundraising campaign. We had tremendous support from this community, and many of you who are here today were some of those supporters. We had over 41 major donors. We also had many other individuals who contributed what they wanted to contribute. I'd like to, just as a small recognition and token of our appreciation, pass out something to each of the Commissioners to thank you. And then in a minute, I'll tell you about We'd like to invite all of you to attend the jitney debut party. It's Saturday, November 14th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Train Depot. The jitney will be there in fine spirit, and we will be offering jitney rides and some refreshments. And we invite all of you to attend and celebrate with us with Mr. Ypsilanti, our major donors, and the community. One last note, a postscript. Mr. Ypsilanti drove the jitney summer vacations when he was in high school. And I think, find it really interesting to know that in his career, he went on to be a long-distance Greyhound bus driver, and won many awards for accident-free driving all around the United States. It was a dream of Mr. Hercules Ypsilanti's to save that jitney for Tarpon Springs. We are honored that he selected the Historical Society to do that. We thank you, the City of Tarpon Springs, as one of our major donors, and as our partner in preserving history for the city of Tarpon. And we sure invite you to come out on November 14th. Thank you so much.
We'd like to thank you, Mr. Terrapanny, and all of those that was on that committee, all the Historical Society for the work of continuing to restore the history of Tarpon Springs and keeping it alive for the future. I don't know if there's any public comments on this item. But thank you again.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
We'll now go to Employee Wellness Clinic Report.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Aaron Carper with the Florida League of Cities. I've got Wendy White from CARE-ATC with me as well. I am the account executive for the Florida League of Cities for the Group Health Program. Clay Austin, the director of the health program, I think you all know him very well, did have a medical emergency with one of his staff members today that he did need to attend to. And thus, you know, he sent me in his place while he's attending to that emergency. He apologizes for not being in attendance today. Couple things, you know, we do have a presentation, you know, for you on the review of the program. I have a couple of notes that I want to make, you know, about the League before we get started. You know, the League, we are the united voice for Florida's municipal governments. Its goals are to serve the needs of Florida cities and promote local self-government in the Sunshine State. Florida city officials formed as a group of municipal governments for the first time in 1922. They wanted to shape legislation, share the advantages of cooperative action, and exchange ideas and experiences. Growing from a small number of cities and towns, the League of Cities has now reached over 400 members statewide. League is governed by a board of directors composed of elected municipal officials. The League functions under its charter, its bylaws, while the strategic plan outlines the mission, goals, and objectives. League's headquarters are in Tallahassee. The insurance and technology operations are in Orlando. League is a premier provider of many different products and services developed especially for municipal government. Strength and success are dependent upon the support and participation of our members. We continue to explore new ideas for programs, products, and services that will meet the needs of municipalities today and tomorrow. And we, the League of Cities, are very supportive and invested in this clinic. We funded our own money to get this started. You know, everything and anything that we do here at the League of Cities is because either our members had asked for it, or we believe the League at being the right thing to do to assist our cities long-term. And so, you know, Clay and I do work very closely together on a daily basis and do, you know, I'm kind of the eyes and ears of the League's health program when I'm out on the road. You know, we do talk frequently, and I'm, you know, very well, you know, understanding of, you know, what we're doing here in Tarpon Springs and Oldsmar and all of our cities, you know, throughout the state, otherwise. You know, we do share many of the same views, you know, most especially with regards to the importance of a wellness program, and also the importance of, you know, preventative medicine, you know. And when I say preventative medicine, I'm talking about identifying conditions, diseases, early. Let's treat them early while they're treatable, while they're cost-effective to do so, before they, you know, possibly do get out of control. Those options later on down the road do become, you know, much smaller as that condition or disease progresses, and also much more costly as well. You know, but everything, and again, we do here is for our members, whether it be our training, whether it be our FLC universities, whether it be our insurance programs, whether it be this wellness center. You know, everything and anything that we do is for our members. And, you know, I thank you for your time, and I have Wendy here to go over a few things, and I'll be back with you on some other items. So, Wendy?
Good evening, everyone. So, just a brief summary of the Wellness Center program. We opened in late September of 2013, and for purposes of this presentation, we did include the visits that occurred between September 23rd of 2013 and the end of September in year one, because there simply wasn't enough data to call that year one. We wanted to make sure that we included that information in the data that we looked at. So year one is inception date of September 23rd through September of 2014. Year two is October of 2014 through September of 2015. It is a shared facility with the City of Oldsmar. Just by virtue of the number of employee lives that are involved, it's 70% City of Tarpon Springs and 30% the City of Oldsmar. The contract renews in September of 2016. Part of the value proposition of the services that are provided at the Wellness Center are the fact that we're able to provide many same-day and next-day services for the employees that call and need services the same day. Additionally, if a patient books an appointment at 10:00 a.m. on that day, they are the only patient with an appointment at 10:00 a.m. on that day. We never double-book or over-book the patient time, because it's important to us that the 30-minute slot that that patient has is spent quality time with the physician face-to-face. So, participation, as you can see from this slide, in year one, over year two, the Wellness Center visits and the annual personal health assessment participation, there was growth in both years. We also had 48 Tarpon Springs patients who completed their personal health assessments with CARE-ATC in both year one and year two, which means they're coming back to see us. This is just a breakdown of the patient demographic and how we see it. You can expect in a Wellness Center program that starts from the ground up to have about 30% employee penetration in year one, and about 50% employee penetration in year two. At the conclusion of year two, which was the end of September of 2015, you had actually had a 61% employee participation or penetration rate, which means that 61% of your employees have visited the Wellness Center. That's translated to 171 unique employee patients. This definition of unique employee patients means that they've visited at least one time in that two-year period. And then 48 family members or dependents have also been there. In later slides, when we talk about using the Wellness Center or use of the Wellness Center, that engagement number is actually qualified with more than one visit. This was just to demonstrate that at least one time, 171 of your employees have stepped through the doors of the Wellness Center. So our key areas of focus, both in the personal health assessment and in our chronic disease management care, is diabetes, cholesterol, and blood pressure. What these slides are telling us is with year one and year two information, in all instances, the patients have seen improvement. In some cases, between year one and year two, not significant improvement, but there's always been some occurrence of improvement in these three areas. And then of the patients with higher critical risk in at least one category, 102 patients completed their personal health assessments, 56 were found to have either high or critical risk factors, and 87.5% of those patients have been to our Wellness Center for their follow-up care. When you take that 56, that number of 56, 54 of the 56 higher critical values were high in Body Mass Index or obesity. What we found is that this was a significant area that required some focus. So this is where I was referring to patients using CARE-ATC. These are patients who have come back to CARE-ATC more than one time. Of that group of patients, those that are using the CARE-ATC facility for some of this care actually had almost a 4% reduction in their overall Body Mass Index or obesity. Those who were not using CARE-ATC actually had an increase of 16% in Body Mass Index, which means that they were 16% heavier in year two. So what is our plan of action? When we see something like obesity being a problem that leads to all of these other contributing factors, the Florida League of Cities, as you probably already know, provides a dedicated wellness coordinator. The Florida League also implemented a Weight Watchers program here at Tarpon Springs in 2014. And from what I understand, it was successful enough that the city elected to continue that even after the funding came to an end by the League, the annual funding. We obviously also have physician-led coaching with individual follow-up of the patients, and we provide educational classes such as nutrition and other targeted conditions that are affected by obesity. And we can narrow that focus to help laser-focus on that. This photograph that you see on the screen here is actually a picture of Tarpon Springs employees attending a nutritional class with CARE-ATC. In this particular case, they came over to the Wellness Center and attended the class, but we also offer those classes here at the city at various locations. It was supposed to be in this room this month, but because it's already set up for council with the renovations going on downstairs, we weren't able to do it this month. But our plan is always to be able to offer it either at the Wellness Center or here at city locations. The employees who attend this meeting actually receive, you all have seen the shiny green bowl that came across. It's a lunch container. It's a Japanese-style bento box, is what it's called. called. They do receive this lunch box for attending the classes. They also receive recipes and other nutritional materials. We try to arm them also during the classes. We have a healthy snack that's provided, or we may bring something like a quinoa salad, which is an unusual item, but it's very healthy, and it encourages patients to try something that they've never tried before. So, in the next slide, we want to look at the impact of the Wellness Center on the United Healthcare Plan for Tarpon Springs in 2014. What I would like to point out, we did submit this presentation prior to tonight's presentation, and I went back over the data this morning, and I actually found one area that I will point out as I'm going through. I mistyped which category it was for, but there was an overall reduction in outpatient physician visits, including specialty care, of 18.2%. There was an overall primary care occurrence reduction of 10.5%, and this is where the change is, the overall physician care cost reduction of 18.1%. Your presentation might say "primary care," but the actual statistic was associated with all physician care, which includes specialty care, primary care visits, and OBGYN visits on the United Healthcare Plan. You can also see that there was a cost reduction in the emergency room visits, and then one area that we wanted to point out that we saw an increase is the occurrence of specialty care occurrence, and then also the overall cost reduction in specialty care. So, one thing that we do is, you can imagine that we're seeing patients for the first time, and they're doing health assessments for the first time in year one and year two. So, we're identifying, for some patients, their very first diagnosis of diabetes, or high cholesterol, or blood pressure. And so, once we engage that patient and we're actually treating them, we make appropriate referrals out to the health plan immediately to get them under control and to get those things taken care of. We even keep, in our facility, we actually keep the Healthy Happenings brochure and make sure that patients are aware of what resources are available to them in the local community. We have quit tobacco classes that are available. This is another physician-led program, but these classes and these resources are not led by CARE ATC. We just make sure that the patients understand what resources are available to them in the community. And so, what we see with the overall specialty care cost reduction, and we feel contributes to that, is the fact that we try to help eliminate the replication of certain care by putting everything in a package and making sure that the specialist that we've referred to has all of that information. Maybe it's the lab workup, maybe it's the additional tests that needed to take place prior to a specialty referral, but overall, by preventing the duplication of those services, we make sure that that specialist has that information, and that can help contribute to the reduction in the overall cost. So, it's probably pretty well-known that most of the time when you receive patient feedback from patients, it's usually because someone is not happy, because they haven't had a good experience. So, we try to give the patients an opportunity to provide feedback before they leave the facility. We offer them an iPad survey. They answer 10 questions. It's a very brief survey, but they answer those questions and they're out the door. One of the questions that we asked was, "What made you choose CARE ATC primary over other primary care centers or walk-in clinics?" So, the two pieces that stood out were the no-cost visits and the no-cost prescriptions. They also noted convenient location, convenient scheduling, and better staff and physician. The other question is, "How likely are you to recommend CARE ATC to a coworker or a family member?" And as you can see, those answers, those responses, were both in the two top categories, which is likely and very likely. So, now we're going to move on to the financial summary. We do a basic Main Street cost comparison, in addition to looking at the overall program costs, and then a trend comparison, and that's where you're able to see how you're performing versus the other city that's participating there. So, in the Main Street cost comparison, without the Wellness Center, these costs would be claims against the health plan, which could result in an additional increased premium year-over-year. The office visit and lab Main Street values are calculated at 150% of Medicare allowable, which is what rates were established on in this area. We did use the area-specific rates that were provided. Prescription value is not included in that, so in order to have a Main Street value for that, we did use basic retail costs for averages from places like Walgreens and CVS, the common big-box providers that you would expect to see in an area. So, looking at the actual CARE ATC costs, which is the cost, the operational cost for delivering these services, what you can see is, in year one and year two, the pass-through costs are flat despite the increase in visits and services that are provided at the facility. The actual cost of delivering those services that are passed through to the health plan are very minimal, and they remained very flat. There was only a difference of a few dollars there, regardless of the fact that there were over 200 more visits in year two. Number of visits in year one, 513 visits for Tarpon Springs employees, and in year two, that was 732 visits. So, the cost projected savings there was $119,000 in year one and $163,000 in year two. Moving on to the actual Wellness Center program costs, the direct funding from the City of Tarpon Springs is the first number that's on this slide, and that's the cost of the facility. The City of Tarpon Springs actually funds 65% of the lease of the Wellness Center location. CARE ATC pays a portion of it. Of course, the City of Oldsmar pays a portion of it, and then the City of Tarpon Springs pays a portion of it. In year one, the only cost to the City of Tarpon Springs was $25,963.90, which was the actual pass-through cost of their percentage of the lease of the facility. The league paid all of the program costs in year one, including the startup costs, which were about $56,000, which is why you can see the numbers for year one were higher than the costs in year two. There's a net operating cost, when you look back at this slide, and you can see the projected savings of $163,390 on year two, and then when you subtract that from the $176,887.55, that leaves an operating cost of $13,497.55, inclusive of the physician, and the operating cost, all of the supplies, every Band-Aid, every prescription, every lab that these patients received. But when you add in the facility cost, that number comes back up to $38,734.74. When I just did the basic math, applying from that $38,000 figure to the 732 office visits, the all-in cost for all of the services, prescriptions and labs, and every supply included, that averaged $52.91 per visit. So, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron to talk about the four-year trend, and this is sort of how you evaluate how you're stacking up to the other cities.
All right. And so, there are a couple of observations that we can make off this, you know, right off the bat. The first, the cost of medical care, cost of insurance here in the greater Tampa area isn't going down. I mean, it seems it is rising slightly from year to year. It's not just here, you know, it's everywhere that we work with and all our municipalities throughout the state. Nationwide, you know, the cost of medical care, you know, unfortunately, is going up. Couple of other pieces of that, City of Oldsmar, you know, is our partner, you know, in this Wellness Center. They have seen actually a little bit of a decrease in their increases, if that makes sense, from year to year, and actually, this year, they did, you know, warrant, you know, a small decrease with their premiums this year. I don't know if that's indicated on that slide, but I do believe that their decrease was in the range of, I think, 1% to 2%. City of Tarpon Springs, you know, when we, you know, fund year 1213, we were experiencing decreases with our insurance program, and as the years have evolved, you know, we actually approached a 10% increase this year. So, it does look like, you know, that over time, you know, we have increased our claims costs. Well, why? You know, what is the result of that? And the questions can be, is it the Wellness Center-related? Is it, you know, what could it be? And so, part of my day-to-day job, you know, with our cities is to communicate the claims information, not only the monthly claims, but also the large claims that do come about. And a large claim, you know, any claim over $50,000, you know, I communicate that with our cities on a monthly basis. And in evaluation of the City of Tarpon Springs claims from fund year 1213, even the fund year 1314 versus now, you know, this current renewal, we had five significant claims on our medical insurance that did, that impacted our rates. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, what could it be? You know, is it dumb luck? You know, sometimes people just get sick, you know, unfortunately, in our society, you know, that does happen. You know, could it be, you know, that we have caught a large claimant or two and began to treat that early? That could be the answer as well. You know, what we're doing here, you know, we're trying to, again, preventative maintenance, preventative medicine. We're trying to go and catch a disease or two early, catch a condition or two early, treat it, control it, and that's going to save us a lot of money long-term. And so, you know, in the evaluation of the claims a couple of years ago, pre-Wellness Center to today, you know, with regards to our day-to-day, our office visits, our emergency rooms, those claims actually have gone down. What has gone up is the incidence of those large claimants, and there were five this past year that cost us a significant amount of money on our insurance. You know, this could be a topic that I might want to ask for any questions. Does anybody have any questions on council about this? Commissioner?
Thank you. First off, no one would argue this is a great program that our employees have access to, be able to have no-cost to them healthcare, and I believe, Mark, do we not penalize them for time off to go there? We, something?
Correct.
So, that's another, you know, plus as well. And then the early detection are benefits that you can't even really quantify so much, and that's great. So, my, you know, whole, what's the right word? My whole concern has never been the benefit. We need this benefit for our employees, is how do we give it to them? And I was a little, you know, disappointed when we had the increase in our health insurance after two years having this center, but as you said, we have some large, large, large claims, but, you know, that's just part of life. My main concern, though, is just to kind of see, I think we need another year of data, which will be when the contract's up for renewal, to make a sound decision of whether this has worked or not. Year one, again, you all covered the cost, which was very nice of you all, and thank you for doing that. Year two, like was said, we had to pay in $38,000 for this, so we're, whenever we're having to pay to save, it's always an area that I want to look after. How many hours a week is this clinic open?
The facility is actually open for 12 hours a week for physician care and another four hours a week for nurse-only care, so a total of 16 hours.
16 hours, okay. So, as I look forward to when we would be renewing next summer, I think we should definitely have an update in six months perhaps, so we're not seeing this update right as when we have to renew. So, we will have a whole nother, at least six months or more, sets of data, and we can really see, is this being cost-effective? Again, no one's disputing the benefit. Our employees need this benefit, but is it the best thing to have it through our health insurance company when our costs keep rising? And we'll have to see, and maybe in year three or halfway through into year three, if we're having a deficit like year two or not. So, but bottom line, I appreciate what you all have done. It's just the costs are a concern for me, and I should probably start using this bento box here, it might benefit people, so, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner, and I will mention, you know, hey, that you did bring up a very good point, that $39,000, you can't quantify it. You can't. But I will guarantee you that, you know, over the cost of this program, you know, we have caught a large claimant or two large claimants at the minimum, you know, and we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars of medical care long-term. So, you know, thank you very much for your time.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
But, or, I told Commissioner Tarpan on that.
What? Thank you.
My question is really for you, Mark, and I appreciate the presentation. It was certainly helpful and contained a lot of useful information. I share some of the same concerns as Commissioner Banther, but just as we come back with more data, Mark, something that I'd like to know is, maybe we can get some info from HR, is I understand that with our healthcare programs that our employees don't necessarily have to use CARE ATC. They can go to an emergency room down the street, or they can go to another care provider, and I think that's good. So, my question is, as it relates to geographically where our employees live, like I know we have a lot of employees in Pasco County, I know we have a lot of employees that come, you know, that commute from North Pasco and even parts of Hernando County. So, CARE ATC is in Palm Harbor, and my mindset is that, you know, it'd just be nice to know where these employees live and where they're coming from, if they want to go specifically to this clinic. So, you know, as we come back, the contract renews and comes up in 2016, so as we come back with more info, that's just a little bit of data that I'd like to know as it relates to the location of the facility.
Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with a question that Commissioner Banther had in terms of making the program more cost-effective. I'm just wondering, as we look at the program as it exists right now, what are some of the things that could be done in order to make it more cost-effective? Are we doing what we need to do to make sure we get the word to the employees about the program? Would it be beneficial to adjust the hours, either having the hours at different times, different days, increase the hours, decrease the hours? What are some of the things, some of the variables at play that could make the program more cost-effective?
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Well, I would definitely agree that the number of hours is definitely can at times contribute to the barrier to care, because we're open on Monday and Thursday mornings from 8:00 a.m. until noon, Wednesday morning from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and then Tuesday afternoons from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. And so, being able to grow in terms of utilization is the first step. Once the patients are in and they're using the facility, and as you saw from the data, over 200 more visits in year two than year one, so, and my office is actually located, which is one of the reasons why CARE ATC shares the cost of the lease. My office is located in the back of the Palm Harbor location, and so, I see the flow, and I see the number of patients that come in and the increased number, and how they're engaged with the current physician. Those are going to be important pieces to being able to justify additional hours. One of those steps is we have a plan in place for 2016, increasing the educational opportunities. I'm going to tell you, that bento box presentation that we started out offering, the first day we opened it, to both cities for the opportunity to come to the Wellness Center and have the bento box presentation, the City of Tarpon Springs filled that entire roster. 15 people signed up the same day we opened the opportunity, because they were so excited about being able to come in and have these additional opportunities. So, that tells me that there's engagement and that there's interest. Also, the fact that the employees have the added benefit of one hour of paid benefit time to attend their visits there at CARE ATC tells us that we probably should stick to the business hours of operation and not have to look too much beyond that. What we find with the public sector is that because they have the added benefit of one hour to drive to the facility, have their appointment, and get back to work, they typically don't care about Saturday hours or evening hours. But added hours throughout the week are definitely things that we're going to look at in terms of being able to expand the offerings and being able to offer additional opportunities for care.
And you believe that would make the entire program more cost-effective?
Well, overall, that increases the number of people coming into the facility, and therefore then has a natural effect on the health plan that it's diverting some of that cost.
Well, and I appreciate that, because I want to reiterate what Commissioner Banther said, that it's important that we offer this benefit to the employees. That's very much a positive thing that I think we should attempt to continue, but it is also important that we do this and offer this in a way that's cost-effective for the city.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
First, I want to thank y'all for coming and tell Clay we missed him, but we understand some things. But I do believe as we move forward with some of the questions that was asked, and you're doing a survey, and the survey is actually to people that are presently using it, is why are you using it? And I think that at some point in time, Mark, we should try to do somewhat of a survey that's simple, that addresses all employees. You should get some of the same answers as to why you're using it, but to those employees that why you're not using it. So that, you know, to me, if you want to know why people are not doing something, you ask them. We can speculate a lot of things, and we might be right and we might not be, so I just think that something like that would help us as we continue. So I just think that something like that would help us as we continue to look at making it available. I, you know, I, I say, uh, fortunately had the opportunity to utilize the services after I was trying to do some other things and when I had my, uh, bout with the hiccups that I hate to even think about. And the thing about it is that, you know, when I went to even the gastrologists after I went there, because it's such a rare thing, nobody really knows what causes it, so therefore they do practice a lot of medicine in terms of trying to figure out. And I was fortunate that when I went, the, uh, the medication that I was given actually cured it, even though when I went to the gastrologist afterwards, he was saying, hey, I, I was up all night reading up to try to figure out what to give you. So he basically concurred with what had happened or what the diagnosis was. So I can testify that, you know, it's, it's, it's a good service that we are offering to the employees and it's trying to figure out why some are not using it, even though the statistic shows that it's growing. First year, you know, you have that baseline figured in, it did grow, hopefully will it continue to grow, but they're trying to figure out why some of the others, and maybe it's the hours, you know, maybe it's the fluctuation of morning to afternoon and the rest, but if we can do something like that, I think that that would help.
That's right.
Yes, sir. Oh, Commissioner Seaver, the, the quiet one?
The quiet one. Well, being last to speak, most, most of y'all have said a lot of the things that I, I was interested in saying, but thank you for your presentation. Um, I was also curious, I'd like to see more data, like Commissioner Banther said, uh, more frequently, so that we don't get it just as we're renewing the contract, but, um, and if we are going to have, uh, added hours, if that will become more effective, um, and , um, cost-effective. So that would be interesting to see if we, if we can get some data on that when you decide to do that. Um, I also, uh, agree with Mr. Terapany about the use of Care ATC in other areas, and maybe that's why we're not having the use here as much. Uh, and, and what, how are we telling our employees? How are our employees being informed? Do you know how they're being informed, HRs?
The participation of the Wellness Center? So various times throughout the last two years, we had employee meetings. We participate every year in the open enrollment meetings that HR conducts and talks about changes in the health plan. And then we scheduled separately with the wellness coordinator for the Florida League, we scheduled, um, separate departmental meetings, and we've also offered onsite personal health assessment opportunities where we came to them and actually did the fasting blood draw at their work site. Um, we were, we were here last Halloween, and, uh, I remember that mainly because my staff dressed up as vampires for the blood draws, and, and there, there was a good chuckle about that. But the feedback that we received from the employees was, you know, I had the best of intentions, but I don't think I ever would have gotten in my car and driven down there if you hadn't come to me the first time. So those are opportunities where we can bring the convenience to them. It's just like implementing a new, uh, smartphone app that we implemented this summer, having an opportunity to promote their healthcare at their fingertips. The employees have, um, access to not only their office visits, but their vitals, their personal health assessment, their lab results, all their current medications right there at their fingertips. So these are additional ways that we find to adapt to the current needs of the people, and we reach out to them where they are.
Yeah, I was just curious because, you know, to increase participation, what are we doing to do that? And, and actually, it sounds like with fifty-two dollars, uh, per visit, that's pretty cost-effective right there, but, uh, thank you, Dan.
Uh, are there any, uh, public comments on this item? Yes, sir. State your name and address for the record.
So Bruce Burgum, thirteen ninety-five South Pinellas Drive, Tarpon, the CEO of the hospital. I, I wanted to applaud the, the literature that you're passing out in your center there. I think that we are the author of that, but thank you. You know, if the city does choose to go out with an RFP next year, we would be interested in, in looking at that RFP, again, if that's part of the plan for the future, so, but appreciate that.
Thank you. No other, uh, comments on this item, we'll go to item number five, Anclot River dredging.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you. I've been meeting off and on with some of the residents here that have, uh, that have some interest there on the docks, um, as far as dredging goes. Um, like, yeah, some of this was, was when I was very young, so I'll try to recall this here. Um, the last dredge we did was, I think, around O-K, right, Mark? That, that was a recreational dredge, so it was more for areas where, as it were boats were launched, Mark, and what like that. And we, 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 we used, we used like penny money for that. And the last major dredge that we did, that was parts of the Anclot River for more of a commercial use, was in, was in the late nineties. And, uh, it takes a long time, it's not like we just apply for a dredge, it happens, uh, which, which I've been learning this. Um, so we have to get the ball rolling now in hopes that a few years from now, we can have this done. And, um, so, uh, the group, I, I've been meeting with some, some, we'll, we'll, we'll speak here in, 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 uh, in a minute. But the, the main thing is to realize it's not just dredging it, dredging the river, parts of it for certain interest, um, because the economic, the, the economic impact when, uh, the city loses money by boats not coming down the river because they can't get access to unload the shrimp, for fuel, for repair, that fluctuates then, uh, all throughout the town. So it, it is a citywide issue as far as advocating, uh, for this dredge, it's not just for the sponge docks solely. Um, so that's how I kind of want to have it, uh, looked at. As far as moving forward, um, and, uh, we have gotten some good support from Senator Nelson's office, actually some very good support. Uh, we're hoping to lobby the rest of our, uh, you know, senators and, and our, and our congressmen to get, to get, to get their, their support as well. And, um, uh, what I would like to see happen possibly, and there's a consensus after tonight, is that the next meeting to have just a simple, a simple, uh, uh, though, although, 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 uh, like, uh, like, a, a resolution, showing support from the commission to move forward with applying for, 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 for a dredge, so people can use that when they're advocating with different, with the different people, to show that, that, that these, that, that the city is behind that. I've also been told it would be, uh, a good thing if the city would write a letter to the Army Corps of, 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 of Engineers that actually do the dredge and just request one. I'm told that gets denied almost all the time, but it, but that's, that, that, that's at least step one. So it's a, it's a large issue, it's not something quick that we, you know, obviously just vote or whatever. We actually get funding outside of the city for it. So, but thank you, we have a good group of residents that have been very, uh, very, very diligent in how they contacted people and gotten involved. So, uh, again, and, and there's consensus after tonight, I'd like, at, at the, the next meeting for it, uh, for us to vote on something to show official support from the city and start that process to move forward. Again, that's several years down the road, but if we don't start now, um, from, from what I've been told and what I've been learning, I am worried that, um, you know, it, it, it possibly could be too late for some things, and we're already seeing, uh, we're already seeing boats that can't come in to the river now, so, uh, I wouldn't wait any longer to start this process. And that's all I have on that.
Well, thank you. Any other comments on that?
I, I would just, uh, thank Commissioner Banther and the members of the community who have followed up with this since our, uh, since our, our meetings, uh, last year regarding the improvements to the sponge docks. Um, it's certainly a, you know, worthy endeavor, I know that it's going to be timely, I know that the commission's going to have to, um, you know, enact, uh, a resolution like Commissioner Banther said, and then moving forward with follow-up, um, you know, on, on higher state level. So thank you, uh, for what you've done and your follow-up on this issue and what you continue to do. Um, and, you know, I for one am certainly behind it, and I would feel comfortable if, if, if you wanted to start it tonight, Commissioner, if you wanted to gather consensus and then just move forward with the resolution to bring it back at our next commission meeting, or however you'd like to handle it.
Yeah, I was looking at pretty much.
Yeah, I mean, however you'd like to handle it, but there's, you know, to me, there's no reason to wait, so.
Correct.
Uh, if there's a consensus, I'm, you know, ready to move forward, however you see fit.
Well, first thing I look at is, I'd like to go to public comments, but I think that, you know, there's another item, even though we don't need it now, at some point in time there will be some dollars involved. And I think that, you know, within our city manager and our finance department, the rest of that, you, you need to try to figure that out too, as we go forward. Isn't it, the, the resolution, to me, is just something that we do, the contacting is just another thing that's there. It's a process that we go through. The last time was held up by people more so than the, the, the process itself, because we ended in to having a lawsuit that we had to wage our way through for a number of years before that was settled, that prolonged it as much. So I think that as we look at moving forward, we need to look at that aspect of it, of how do we fund our portion of it. Were there any public comments on this item?
Anita Protus, nine oh one Bay Shore Drive. In the nineties, when I was mayor, we went after dredging in the Anclot River. It takes a lot of time and a lot of work. Stay with it, keep it going, do not lose yourself on the list, because once you do, you'll go back to the bottom and you have to climb up again. The money is the most important money you're going to spend in the five most important monies of the community, because our fishing, our shrimping is a lifeline in this community, and it's needed, and the boating that we have here is also a lifeline to a lot of businesses in Tarpon Springs and the surrounding areas. Senator Jack Latvala knows all about what we went through, he can be, I feel, a vital person for you to work with, because we work closely with him and with, uh, Nelson and others, and, but you've got to stay on top of it. Don't let it lapse, because once you do, they're going to knock you back down, and that's what happened to us, I think, with the unnecessary, uh, lawsuit that was put on the city of Tarpon. And because of that, we've lost a lot, but we can regain it. Thank you, uh, Commissioner Banther for bringing it forward, but keep up with it, and sometimes you think you're bothering them, you're not. You've got to stay with it constantly and stay in touch with these people in Tallahassee and the Corps of Engineers. Do not let them tell you you're on the bottom, you have to keep after them to stay on top, but keep with it.
Um, my name is Julie Russell, six one six Island Drive, Tarpon Springs. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the concerned citizens of this community. Um, there is a safety issue that I think that, um, the community needs to be aware of. Um, as far as navigable waterways, uh, Apalachicola or Tampa Bay are the, uh, two closest, um, if we were to get a storm. So Tarpon Springs is a very, very important port, because we, you have a long distance to get to Apalachicola, you also have approximately, like in our shrimp boat, approximately twelve hours to get to Tampa Bay. Um, for safe harboring, for hurricanes, storms, weather, mooring, just for, uh, emergencies, um, natural disasters, mechanical breakdowns, all very important to be able to use Tarpon Springs as a safe haven. Um, the channel has changed over time, uh, due to just the natural, uh, causes, you know, Anclot, it has changed, Three Rooker. So as time goes on, our waterway has narrowed, our channel. So, uh, with recreational and commercial boats, both using the same waterway, as that decreases, the area becomes more of a potential hazard for recreations and commercials together. Economically, there is, uh, many reasons to be on alert to get this done. One being railway and boat repair business, uh, large vessels not being able to come into our town. There was a time when, um, many of the bigger shrimp boats, dredge boats would come into Tarpon. They have now, a lot of times, just made a point to go straight to Tampa, because our channel is becoming, um, more of a hindrance to them to come in. It's not necessarily that they can't come in, but it is not as easy. For tourism, we have a lot of restaurants, you know, our own as well as many others. A lot of the larger, um, uh, yachters that would come and spend their money in our community choose not to because the channel is a hard channel to get into. Since the sponge industry has declined, it is very important that our seafood industry and our dredging and our maybe future use of the Stoffer properties, or even the waterways as far as our values of our land is concerned. All of this has an impact based on whether we get a dredge or not. Um, if you have no waterway usage, you also impact the, the antique shops, the sponge docks, the boats coming in just to, um, have the tourism come in and enjoy the waterways, the working waterfront that we so preciously, uh, value. So for me, as well as many other in the community, find that it's a very, very important fact that we need to look at, the fact that not only is it, um, yes, we'd like to get it dredged, yes, we have a, our personal interests, but there is a safety and an economic interest that we need to look at. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Athena Sardulia, seven thirty-five Dodecanese, Suite Fifty-seven. Thank you, Mayor Archie, and Commissioners for the opportunity to speak this evening. Um, as city officials, you all are aware that the Anclot River is the driving economic force of Tarpon Springs and North Pinellas County. If I may, I'd like to address my comments to my fellow citizens, especially those newer to our city. Historically, the federal government first authorized dredging of the Anclot River in eighteen ninety-nine to create a channel for safe navigation of commercial vessels and also as a safe harbor in the event of war or a hurricane. Maintenance dredging has occurred many times since then, and we are presently in dire need of maintenance dredging once again. Currently, I operate Tarpon Sponge Incorporated, our family business, at the sponge docks. My business, as well as the shops and restaurants at the sponge docks, depend on tourist visitors from all over the US and around the world. The working waterfront is what brings our customers to Tarpon Springs. Guests can actually walk on a working dock. This is an interactive experience that cannot be replicated at a theme park. If we lose our commercial fishing, sponging, and maritime industries, our economy will suffer devastating loss. I've thought about the other locally-owned businesses that my shop supports, electrical repair, air conditioning repair, my accountant, insurance agent, attorney, sign maker, my local vendors, my printer, et cetera. These businesses would all be negatively impacted by the loss of our working waterfront. The last maintenance dredge was done approximately twenty years ago. Since that time, critical areas along the river have silted in and become nearly impassable for commercial vessels and larger recreational yachts. Ms. Russell alluded to the loopers, and the, these are large yachts, and they're sort of like clubs, from what I understand, and they travel together, and we've lost quite a bit of them coming here because they fear damage to their boats getting in. I have observed a gradual loss of the boats coming into Tarpon Springs. Um, I have lost revenue, because a lot of these folks used to spend money in the sponge exchange. They are bypassing us to go further south where they can safely navigate to port. We cannot afford to allow this to continue. We must do the needed maintenance dredging once again, to once again attract these vessels and restore the revenue dollars that they bring into the city. I have a note, um, Mayor Archie noted Veterans Day. Well, during World War Two, as a lot of us must know here, particularly from the Historical Society, the Spongers of all nationalities were exempt from Society, the spongers of all nationalities were exempt from military service. The sponge is a natural fire retardant, I don't know if everyone knew that. So it was used wherever fire insulating material was needed for the war effort. So I'm very proud that Tarpon Springs saved a lot of lives, American lives and Allied lives during World War II. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm Jack Russell, I'm Julie's husband, is what I usually go by, but. Yeah, I just, I don't think most people in this town know how unique Tarpon is. I mean, it's between, you've got Tampa Channel and Tarpon's the only place you can get a boat in that draws, you know, seven feet or more. And I have a boat that's eighty feet, I draw about nine feet of water, and if I follow the channel like it's marked, or follow the rules of the road, I'm going to run aground. It's, you know, it's just that simple. If you don't have the local knowledge, you're going to run into problems. And, you know, it shouldn't be that way. The Coast Guard took out our range markers that we use to come into the channel at night, and that doesn't help anything either, so, you know, they really need to, for safety wise, you just need to dredge it. Thanks.
Peter Delax, five one four Ashland Avenue. Glad to hear this is back in the discussion. Just want to remind a few people about a few things. I think it was around oh six, oh seven, when Ellen was here, we used to have a working waterfront committee. And I'm not sure if, I think Julie was on it, and I know some other people were, but it's kind of disappeared. So I know we have the Pelican people, and I know Mr. Cox was involved, I believe, and some of the people on the north side who did boat repairs. So maybe it's time to, to regather and see if we can't reactivate this group to help our board further pursue this. Because beyond the fishermen, there's a whole industry that we're losing as far as boat repairs and maintenance and things where commercial boats can come in and get taken care of. And I think it's important that we do move forward in regards to this, because so many times, things can not be attended to and fall behind. One other thing I did also want to respond to, as some of the people have spoken, with regards to some of the large yachts and boats that, let's say, the rich people have. I think it was around, also around seven or oh eight, maybe oh seven, when we had a group come in and proposed a project on the north side of the river, and part of their proposal was to do a lot of this dredging, to clear out the channels, to get the water flow. They were going to accumulate some properties on the north side to be able to put in hotels and restaurants. And I know I supported it, and I got flack for it, because everybody was afraid that it was going to damage the uniqueness of Tarpon Springs, you know, the shrimp boat look and the small boats. Well, we've missed an opportunity there for quite a bit of economic fulfillment, and I'm not sure if we can reach back to find a way to, let's say, assist or augment this process, so we can attain part of that economic flow. Because down in St. Pete, and some of the areas down there, I know they've spent some money to, I believe, improve their harbor and their mooring, so they can accommodate these types of, let's say, luxury crafts. Because beyond just the people who own it, they have staffs on board, sometimes fifteen, you know, I'm not sure how many people, between the people who run the boat, who cook, who clean, who do all this stuff, and they get off the boat, and they, they spend money, and then you have the people who want to come visit the people who own the boat. So there is, there is a, a thing that can be looked at, and it might, you know, improve our appearance to some of the world to attract some of this aspect. So I applaud Commissioner Banther and his effort, and those people involved in this industry, and hope we can look for ways to move forward on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. As we look to move forward, I know Commissioner Tarpani talked about it extensively, and I don't think that there's any one that would look at not moving ahead. It's brought up about a lot of things in the past, and it does remind us of some things, and one is that we've always talked about the work, the working waterfront. We did more talking about it than we've done anything else. But I would think as we look at moving forward, City Manager, that, like I said, from a funding perspective, of a strategy perspective, not just with the resolution, but what else that we need to do. We know a lot of it's going to be dealing with our Congressman and other elected officials in terms of trying to move ahead, because it gets to be a, a big political game, shell game, and who's the right person, who's up at the top, who's not, who's going to get funded, who's not going to get funded, and we know things up in Washington is not the greatest right now, but we still can look at how we can, we can look at moving, so then we do that. I don't think there's any issue with that. Okay, so from that, we'll go to our consent agenda. Is there any item that anyone would like to pull? Seeing none, shall we entertain a motion?
No, approval.
Second. Roll call?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Tarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Um, we had orders, resolution, item eighteen, orders twenty fifteen dash seventeen, Tarpon Turtle, amend the future land use plan from RM to CL, this is first reading. I think that's legislative, the rest is quasi judicial. I'll see, Mr. Earl Willoughby? Somewhere coming.
We've got about a twenty second delay next door.
Oh, okay, all right. That's for everybody that might be doing things that might be unseemly, they won't see it next door. But I think that she'd like to take it all together and then vote separately, so.
There she is.
Sorry, we froze in the other room.
No, that's okay. Heather, I'm going to, I'm going to read the ordinances first, both of them, and I'll take them together. I'll make the quasi judicial announcement. The first is ordinance twenty fifteen dash seventeen, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for approximately point eight two seven acres, thirty-six thousand thirty-one square feet of property located on the south side of Lake Tarpon Avenue, adjacent to fifteen thirteen Lake Tarpon Avenue, from RM Residential Medium to CL Commercial Limited, providing for findings and providing an effective date. Excuse me, that's the first reading of ordinance twenty five seventeen, by title only. Second reading will be held on November seventeen, twenty fifteen. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on September one, twenty fifteen. The second is ordinance twenty fifteen dash sixteen, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, for approximately point eight two seven acres, thirty-six thousand thirty-one square feet of property, located on the south side of Lake Tarpon Avenue, adjacent to fifteen thirteen Lake Tarpon Avenue, app fifteen dash forty-seven, from RM fifteen Residential Multi Family to WDI Waterfront Development, providing for findings and providing an effective date. That's the first reading of ordinance twenty fifteen dash sixteen, by title only. Second reading will be held on November seventeen of twenty fifteen. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only with a map on September one, twenty fifteen. Amendment of the zoning map is quasi judicial. In a quasi judicial proceeding, the commission acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At such a hearing, it's the commission's function to apply a law that has already been established. In such a hearing, the commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented, and apply those findings to previously established criteria contained in the city's code of ordinances. The commission may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if that evidence demonstrate the applicant has failed to meet the criteria, the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. There is an established procedure which will be followed this quasi judicial hearing. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying must give their name and address to the record. All testimony and questioning at the hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. The city's staff will present its testimony and evidence first. The applicant will then have the opportunity to cross-examine city staff. The applicant will then present his testimony to witnesses. City staff will have the opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Members of the public opposing the application will then be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public speaking in opposition have concluded, members of the public in support will have the opportunity to present testimony. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes. The applicant will then have the opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, after which city staff will be given the opportunity to make a closing argument or summary. Following this, the commissioner will consider the matter. Commissioners may ask questions. A motion will be made and a vote will be taken. At this time, I would ask for the commission to disclose any ex parte communications on these applications. Seeing none, I'd ask all persons who intend to give testimony tonight to please stand and be sworn. All right, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please be seated. Yeah, Ms. Earl Willoughby?
Heather Earl Willoughby, planning director for the city of Tarpon Springs and staff on this application. Again, the application request is to amend the future land use designation from RM Residential Medium to CL Commercial Limited, and to amend the zoning designation from RM fifteen Residential Multi Family to WD one, which is the waterfront development district. The application is being requested by the Tarpon Turtle LLC. The property size of what is actually being requested to be changed is approximately point eight seven two acres, slightly longer than an acre. The Tarpon Turtle Restaurant has a long history in the community, and the current structure was approved in two thousand and four by the Board of Accounting Commissioners as a site plan oh four dash seventeen, and allowed for construction of a hundred and fifty-four seat restaurant. There was a conditional use application to allow for the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages. The Turtle came to staff earlier in this year and then required, had to discuss and request a possible expansion of their parking lot to allow for additional parking. They currently are having some parking issues along the street, and their, their, excuse me, their employees are currently parking on the street. So to address that concern, they have made, they've come forward with this application to try to address their concern for parking. Subject property is located in close proximity to residential uses, and the future land use category for the surrounding areas predominantly residential medium, with commercial limited, limited right now to the actual Turtle site. The future land use category generates approximately a hundred and two trips, with, up to three hundred and ninety-eight trips per day, per acre, respectively. The subject, again, property is abut a residentially zoned area to the north, south, and west. To the east is the existing Tarpon Turtle site, which is actually on Lake Tarpon. The properties in question are not contiguous. There is a lot between those properties that is actually owned by the Tarpon Sail and Tennis Club of approximately fifty foot wide lot. This allows, this proposes a challenge for the development of these lots, being that it's also on a, on an incline. The entire roadway is elevated from the, the lake up to the main street. Without the site plan being submitted, it's impossible to restrict the use of the park, too strictly to parking. So I want to be clear that this is a land use change. What is going on here tonight is we are having the first reading of an ordinance that will change the city's future land use map, which accompanies the comprehensive plan, and the zoning district to allow for commercial uses. Now, again, this is a small piece of property, so the types of commercial uses that can actually be developed there are somewhat restricted based on the size of the property. That being the case, the types of uses that you could see on this property based on the land use change that's currently being proposed include office, personal service, retail, commercial business services, temporary lodging. There are some secondary uses, including some recreational uses, class A warehousing and wholesale distribution, institutional transportation utility uses. Those last three uses would be very difficult to develop here because of the size of the property. They need a lot of land to develop those type of uses. The parking on the street does pose a significant safety issue for motorists and pedestrians, whether they're there for the restaurant or they're residents in that neighborhood. With the controls in place in the city's land development code, staff's confident that a lot of the negative impacts with what's being proposed here can be mitigated through the site plan review process. The applicant has also, and it's in the backup here, provided a restrictive covenant that would restrict the use on three properties that are currently proposed for the land use change to parking. That being the case, what, if that is approved, and it would again be approved at second reading, restrictive covenants only require a single reading before the board, so prior to you actually acting finally on this, on this ordinance, you would have to approve those restrictive covenants, okay? They would run with the land, they do not change with the ownership, that's something that is recorded in the record, once this, with this bodies act on, acted on it, and any change to it in the future would require another action by this board. If you were to amend it, change it, do away with it, whatever your future request would be from an applicant. So that being the case, I can answer any questions that you may have, but the restrictive covenant is in the backup for your review, for our discussion tonight. If you have questions on how that's going to work, I can, again, go through that process, but essentially, you will not actually adopt those restrictive covenants until this application, second, till second reading of this application. And with that, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Well, first, I'd just start off with, I had a chance to talk with you today, and what my concern was something that we've been reading about somewhat through some of the emails, and that's about the increase in seating with this application, and you correct me when I'm wrong, interject when it time you want to, but this does not automatically give them the right to increase seating.
That is correct. They would have to come back through and actually amend the application for the Tarpon Turtle site itself to request additional seating. Now, with that parking in place, if that parking was needed to be parking to address for the requirements of the, of the land development code for providing parking for additional seating, you certainly would have, that parking, if it was approved, would already be there. And so it would be very difficult for you then to say, no, you can't have those additional seats. But again, the Turtle was actually adopted prior to the land use change through a conditional use process. That conditional use process has never changed. It's still a valid conditional use there, and this board has conditions that are still outstanding on that property that would need to be met. So an expansion of that would have to include a discussion of how that conditional use is, whether it's going to be amended, or whether it's going to be vacated, and then they would then use the underlying zoning and just come through site plan review. Those would be questions that we would answer at the time that the applicant comes forward to ask for those, for those additional seating, if that was their intention. At this particular time, they have not indicated that that's their intention, but you are correct, Mayor Archie, that if there's additional parking out there that is not further restricted in some way, they would be allowed to come in and ask for and use that parking to support additional expansion of the restaurant. Now, the question that you did pose to me, and that would be really that we, Jay and I didn't get a chance to talk about this, so I'm going to put him on the spot a little bit.
Well, I, I kind of talked to him briefly about it, and the, the thought is this, is that, and I told the owners that, I, I... And I told the owners that I appreciate the restrictive covenant. I think the restrictive covenant, hopefully, never sure, alleviates some of the fear that there, the parking would be at some point in time used for something else that's undesirable. So that should alleviate that fear. Now, the other thing that comes in the mind is that there's a fear that the seating will increase, which is the reason I asked about that, because, you know, I don't believe that this is a backdoor attempt, that we get the parking, then we can go and we can increase the seating. But perception is reality, and the perception is that with the parking, which I was asking, with this parking, now, future commissioners, would they have an opportunity to deny any increased seating because of this parking? And when I listened to you initially, the parking issue came about because of the employees on the street, safety. Everybody said they want it to be safer, so it should seem like, in theory, you have the parking is safer because you're not parking on the street. I think we were talking, the chief said that, you know, if this goes away, we'll make sure that there's no street parking. So it's not one where we have this additional parking and we're back to parking on the street again. So it's trying to alleviate what could be potentially a problem. But then is now, how do we maybe alleviate the concern that parking that's for the employees primarily, not to say that anybody else can't park there, but it's primarily for the employees, how do we prevent, in a sense, from that to be used at some point in time in the future to look at increasing? And my question was, can anything be put into the restrictive covenant that if it's two-thirds of the parking would be for employees, the rest would be for anybody else, to assure the individual that's within the community that this is not going to be, in a little while, coming back saying, we want more seating, that's what we want for the parking? So it's trying to get to a point that I believe, I hope everybody wants to get to, is where is that compromise to alleviate that fear? And can there be something, and I know it's the same way we said before, we can't tell them to do the restrictive covenant. They voluntarily put this in, and I appreciate that. How can we alleviate the fear of that then being an opportunity to increase seating then?
So my professional planning is that we have nothing that would preclude that, Jay, from us putting an additional restriction on that for only employee. Whether that's a legal issue would be another story.
Yeah, not in the application that's presently before the board.
Correct.
Now, that doesn't stop the applicant from executing an independent restrictive covenant on the Turtle property itself, you know, as opposed to these ancillary properties, or alternatively, an amendment perhaps to the conditional use that's presently existing on the property. So that particular point couldn't be addressed within, on these three parcels that we're discussing today, but could be addressed in another way.
Yeah, and this is just something, it's not as much for you as for the owners and applicant in terms of putting the restrictive covenant in place anyway. They put it in because they desire to try to alleviate some of the fears of the neighborhood and saying, hey, listen, we don't want to have anything else to ever park it. And it's whether they feel that they're comfortable enough to say that, you know, this parking we have primarily for the employees, you know, some of it perhaps could be used for the customers, but that's not our intention for it, all of it ever being, so that it's not, I come back next year, I've got all of this parking, now I want what's rightfully mine, and then we're back to square one again, and people saying, well, that's not what you started off with, that type of thing. Just trying to alleviate future concerns. So, and that's not something for you to address, but the proper time is that whether they would like to do that or not, because it's their covenant, not ours.
And again, that covenant can be modified between now and the time that you have second reading. It's just, once it's approved, it's not going to be modified without coming back to this board, so.
Any other questions?
So basically, my understanding is they're limited to 154 seating with their current, you know, plan. They would have to come back in front of a board to get any kind of additional seating?
Based, based on my research and what has been approved right now is that they have 154 seats. Now, that doesn't mean they can't come forward and ask for additional seating from you, but they would need to do that. Correct.
Mr. Erwola, I know you said in the backup is the restrictive covenant, but for the record and for the people, could you go into a little bit of detail in terms of what is restricted in the covenant and how that transfers? I know you said it, but as far as if the Tarpon Turtle was to sell or become under new ownership or anything like that, the restrictive covenant does what?
So essentially, what happens with the restrictive covenant, once it's approved by this board, and it will be recorded in the public record. And at the time, if there was a transfer in the sale of the property that are covered under the restrictive covenants, that would go with the land, okay, because it's recorded in the public record. It will remain with the land until such time as somebody would come to this board and ask for it to be released. So that's how the restrictive covenant works. It runs with that property in perpetuity until it's asked to be amended or they're asked, or they ask for a release from that restrictive covenant. And again, that comes back to the board for that final action.
And from an approval standpoint, you mentioned that the restrictive covenant would be something that would come back for second reading, and you don't see any issue logistically with approving this and then something changing by the time we went to second reading and then the restrictive covenant not be there?
Well, we, again, they would have the opportunity to remove that restrictive covenant at any point during this process. They have submitted, it's a separate application. It runs contiguous with these applications because it's for these applications to help make these applications a little more acceptable to the community because they're restricting down the types of uses that can be on that property. That being the case, I don't foresee a problem with running that restrictive covenant as long as we review that prior to actually acting on these ordinances for second reading. And so if there's been a material change in that discussion at that time, we would present that information to the board, so you'd be aware of any changes that the applicant has made to any of the applications.
That's a second reading.
Correct.
I appreciate the information that we're getting in terms of the fact that the additional parking could theoretically in the future give the applicant an opportunity theoretically, or a new owner theoretically to say, hey, we've got these additional parking spots. Now, maybe we are interested in having additional seating. And I understand that isn't necessarily the desire of the current applicant, but I know we have to look at all of these options, and I think it's useful that we're getting this information from staff as well as from our city attorney. And if I'm understanding correctly, we have a current restrictive covenant in our backup, but we're not actually approving or accepting or doing anything with it tonight because that's only part of the second reading. And what I'm also hearing is that theoretically, the applicant could decide to make changes, could modify that restrictive covenant in a way that what, that would declare that these parking spots would not be used for additional seating? What is exactly that they would do?
The restrictive covenant, what they're asking you to do tonight through the applications is to change the future land use and the zoning map, which would give them the ability to do particular things on that property over and above what they can do now. The restrictive covenant is merely their representation to you that they intend to use it for the sole purpose of parking. That's what the purpose of the restrictive covenant is.
The current one, I understand that. What I'm, I'm trying to follow up on some of the mayor's questions in terms of whether or not they might choose to make additional modifications to the restrictive covenant that, I think he was asking whether or not they could declare their intentions that would not be, that would not be to have increased seating. Maybe I misunderstood.
Okay, all right, yeah. They could declare that. It's not part of this application and really can't be, because the additional seating attaches to the Turtle property itself, not to the parking lots, not to these proposed spaces. That makes sense?
And just to clarify, what I'm saying is that, you know, if within the strict covenant, and this is where I'm looking for you, there is something that says that there's a total number, we'll say it's 40 spots there, and they're saying, well, whatever that might be, half of this would be for employees. So at some point in time, if they wanted to declare that we want to increase it, they wouldn't have but 20 parking spots there, not to use the whole parking in relationship to seating. And that's them saying, our intention is to really use this for employees. We don't want to say that nobody else is going to use it. But if this is 40 spots and they say, well, hey, our intention is only to use this, half of whatever we create will be used for employees, I would think that in the future, when they're looking at that type of, for any future changes, that will be taken into consideration. Whatever can be done with the restrictive covenant that would ensure that we're not looking at this wholesale at some point in time, people are now faced with more seating there, which they believe creates more, you know, and this is not a reflection on you guys as much as it is on past, more chaos in the community. You have a number of people that have spoken highly of the restaurant, as, I don't know if it's as many as have signed, but I always look at petitions, and I don't know whether people know what they're signing or what they're being conveyed to. So I don't really hold that as high, but there is an issue as it relates to seating. And what I've heard from everyone right now is that this has nothing to do with increased seating today, but does it have anything to do with increased seating tomorrow? And if it doesn't, it's the same thing as what was done with the restrictive covenant. You put something in there to alleviate the fears of people, and to me, to increase the comfort level of the people that's sitting up here, that we're not doing something that would change the makeup of the neighborhood and their quality of life. That's kind of.
Yeah, I think I understand your question. We may wish to hear from the applicant, I see Mr. Pressman is here.
And that's kind of what I was getting, whether or not it would be appropriate to ask the applicant if they're prepared to comment on some of the things that are being discussed.
Yeah, sure, and I don't want to put Heather on the spot either, because she and I have not discussed this, but it seems to me that, I don't know that through a restrictive covenant, we're going to be able to control who parks in those lots, employees versus customers, but there is a ratio, Heather, is there not, of a restaurant of X amount of seats requires Y amount of parking?
Correct. Basically, how parking is done is not only do you account for in the parking calculation for the patrons coming to that restaurant based on the number of seats, but you also accommodate for the staff that is going to serve them for the parking spaces that were done.
So perhaps it could be handled that way in terms of the, in terms of the raw number of spaces permitted in relation to the present number of seats in the restaurant?
Correct. And just so I can make a clarification, it's not 154 as stated in the staff report, it's actually 177, and I didn't get a chance to make that correction. There was a change in what was approved over time with the Turtle. It's a very convoluted history, so they do have, they had an approval for 154 seats. It was modified to 177, which is the current approved number of seats at the restaurant. Now, did I go and count the seats? I do not know. That's based on the last site plan that was actually done, and I do apologize for that. I had a correction, I just didn't get it into the packets in time. But there is also a discrepancy, and this was pointed out by one of the, one of the residents in the area, that their alcoholic beverage license is for additional seating. I can't control for the number of alcoholic beverage license seats that the state approves. All we can control for is what we approved, and that is what, that is what they are limited to today. Now, can they go to what the state approves? Certainly, they can, they can attempt to do that, but that's something that they would have to come back through approval to do that, and I do apologize for that error.
Yeah, I don't want to overreact to all these questions. I think that's probably best handled through a, through a raw number of calculation versus employee versus patron spacing, but we may wish to hear from the applicant to see where they're going.
Is there any other questions of staff right now?
I have a question. Yes, would there be, say, this passes, a second reading passes, the covenant's passed, you know, like, as they are now, is there restrictions on them having events in the parking lots?
They would be.
Like COVID fest or something of that nature?
They would be subject to the special event criteria in the land development code. If they can meet that criteria, then they would be allowed to do special events or get approval for special events.
Then they have to get approval to hold.
Correct.
Or anything besides parking a vehicle?
Correct.
Okay.
And if there's a restrictive covenant on that property that is approved, whether or not we would allow that, that event, it would probably not happen because you've got a restrictive covenant that is only going to be used as parking. So if you have a restrictive covenant that's been approved, you can only do parking there, and then you come in for a special event, even if it's temporary in nature, you really need to look at that restrictive covenant and what it's really saying that that property's to be used for. So, is that satisfying? The answer?
Other, any other questions? I love this. Do you want to?
Mr. Mayor, my name is Todd Pressman, 334 Eastlake Road, number 102, Palm Harbor, Florida. We're very happy to be here this evening. It's my understanding, I can ask a couple of questions of Heather on the record, correct, sir?
You may.
So my question is, it's my understanding, Heather, from our discussions, that parking at this particular site was approved and is controlled by conditional use. And then to change the amount of seating at this particular site would require a public hearing to change that conditional use approval.
Correct.
Okay, so I want everyone to be very clear, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, city manager, because there's a lot of discussion here, and I think it was very muddy, it's very clear, no amount of parking can change at this site unless it comes before the city, as Heather just indicated, to change the conditional use, which is, which is on record at the city. We're not here dealing with the conditional use. So the number of seats is fixed, and by approving this evening what's before you, the amount of parking cannot increase. So if I may, then move forward, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I, before you move forward.
Yes, sir.
I would like to have the same thing that you said for Ms. Erwola to go and ruckus and saying, because when I asked, my question was this, and I'm trying to make it clear, with the new parking, can the applicant then ask for increased seating? And what is the right of the commission, whoever sits here at that time, to deny it? You know, not arbitrarily, I don't like it, you want to do this, but I'm talking about based upon, on fact, it's the commission's decision whether to approve it or not, without saying, no, we don't do it because we don't think it's right, and then the commission is sued. That's all I was asking, and if that's the case, I'm perfectly ready to move on, you know?
So the Turtle itself, Todd, you're so much taller than me. The Turtle itself is controlled by the conditional use. So the change in that, they can come and make a request. This board would then have, or those sitting in your seats at that time, would have that, the same opportunity that you had when the original conditional use was approved, to look at compatibility with that surrounding neighborhood, to determine if, if and when at that time, is it appropriate to allow for additional seating. The parking being there allows for them to have the already existing parking to support that request. Whether or not you can determine, you'd have to look at a compatibility issue if it's compatible, rather than looking at a straight site plan condition that we have the parking, we can just automatically do this. They still have to come before the board and request that amendment. They still have to come before the board and request that amendment.
Okay. And I would take that to-
Is that-
To say-
Clear.
You know, record that, that would give the, any future commission the right to deny it based upon it's a conditional use.
Correct. They're gonna, they're gonna do it on the conditional use piece.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's all I need.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, sir.
I, I'm sorry to, I, I know we're harping on this issue over and over again. I just, Ms. Irwill, earlier you said, because I, I wrote it down because I found it interesting. Earlier, when the mayor was asking questions about the parking and whether or not that would trigger additional seating, um, you said, once they have additional parking, it would be difficult to say you can't have additional seats. You, you said it would be difficult to do that, so I wanna get clarification on what-
If your only basis for denying the conditional use is that they don't have parking, if there's no other issue that you, that you have, the fact that the parking is there would allow for them to request that. However, there are other concerns when you look at a con- conditional use of-
Compatibility.
Compatibility with the surrounding area, you know, noise, any of those other types of things that are, you have regulations for, you can look at as part of that application.
Thank you.
So, we clear? Okay.
Mayor, Commissioners, and citizens who are here this evening, my name again is Todd Pressman, three, three, four, Eastlake Road, number one oh two in Palm Harbor, Florida. And we're very happy to be here. We're very happy to have submitted to the city a restrictive covenant. We're here to work, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, we're here to work with you to make anyone feel as comfortable as possible. The Turtle has been a new ownership and management for quite a while now. It's been very well-run. Uh, the restaurant is completely in compliance with all city codes, and, um, it's established itself as a fine operating restaurant. I will tell you that I have two sides of the coin to present to you tonight. But, let's remember why we're here. And as your staff report tells you, we are here to make this site safer, make it safer for the public and for the citizens who use the site. In fact, your staff tells you in their staff report, and I'll read it verbatim, the parking in the street can pose a significant safety issue for motorists and pedestrians. And Heather has told you with the controls in place, that can be safely done. But I wanna pass this picture along to you, this is what we're trying to avoid. This is a partial sidewalk where there's a lot of cars parked beyond it. And people at the end of the sidewalk are suddenly stumbling on dirt lots, or they opt the park in the street, if I may pass this to you. So, we're trying to just make a safe environment here. Uh, and this picture will show you that, again, the sidewalk stops at a very short point, and we're trying to move forward to run the outs, outside this restaurant as well as the interior is. But let's also remember that beyond your staff supporting this, your TRC has thoroughly reviewed it and supported it. Your P and Z has thoroughly reviewed it and supported it. And Mayor, Commissioners, I'll remind you, you voted once already to support it, but because of a notice error, we had to pull it back. So this has already been through the whole system. Tonight, you have a restrictive covenant. So this process has found its way through a lot of your approvals, and those approvals have all been positive. So, on one side of the coin, what I wanna also pass along to you is a lot of support. And what I have for you, and believe me, I know you've gotten a lot of emails, a lot of letters. As I've seen them, there's been a lot of copies, there's been a lot of repeats. A couple of citizens have been working very hard and sending in a lot of emails. But what I wanna give you and remind you is we have several letters here from very closely located neighbors, uh, very close in the vicinity. We also have a petition of a hundred and eight signatures. A lot of these, I wanna be very clear, a lot of these are wide and far, but we started for you quite a number that are in the immediate vicinity and abutting neighbors. So I'd like to put this, uh, in the record for you, for you to review, if I may? So, we wanna document to you that there's a lot of support in the immediate area. I also wanna remind you that we handled our own meeting at the condominiums next door. We had, I wasn't there, but Heather and, uh, Mr. Hut were. There were approximately fifty people there. That was a very good meeting, it was very positive. We had a second meeting at the Turtle. I was there, there were about thirty people or so. That was very positive, we talked about a lot of the issues. That was very, again, very positive and very supportive. So we've demonstrated good support, and we have very good communication. On the other side of the coin, and I have to venture into you, or into this, to tell you that it's my opinion that you're a bit of a victim of misinformation and a lot of misunderstanding. There's been a tremendous amount of information which has been incorrect. And again, I'll say that I think that the Mayor, Commissioners, and the public to a point are victims of misinformation. So, for example, and I'll pass this along to you. You've been told in emails that there are a large number of police complaints and reports. So I want, went down to the police department, I pulled those reports. I wanna read a few of them to you. Noise nuisance, result unfounded. I'm gonna hand these to you, you can read them. Fenton Miller called after Officer Lang responded to the location after a similar complaint. I'm reading from the report. What was at fact was a weed whacker and a blower by the commercial establishment. The officer notes, no weed whacker was in use. The blower is a commercial grade, it had appropriate muffling device. I did not observe any code violations. Uh, another report, a disabled vehicle. Vehicle stuck in sand pit, assist motor or citizen. But again, that's told to you as being complaints of operation of this, of this restaurant. Third one, noise nuisance, submitted by Michelle Branch, complaining about loud music, reading from the record. Did not hear any excessive loud music, spoke to owner, who stated he would still monitor lever, level and not let it go out of hand. It was, again, unfounded. Lost stolen property. There'd be, you're being told that this is one particular complaint of this operation, but it really has lost or stolen property. A woman left her ring, and she went back and tried to find it. Suspicious vehicle. It was, again, another stuck car. Uh, officer notes, I'm sorry, checked area, nobody outside in the parking lot, everything looks normal. So these are all complaints, there's another noise disturbance, anonymous. Uh, complaint of loud construction noise going on. They were, uh, pressure washing. I wanna hand these to you because there's a lot more, and I won't read through them all. But I want you to recognize and realize-
Uh, Katie, if you would?
I want you to recognize and realize that your own police department determined that the great majority of these so-called complaints and police reports are, uh, found to be with no merit. The other thing I wanna make you aware of is that if you look at a petition that was submitted to you in opposition, and this is the petition here, was sent a number of times, there's only two pages to it. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'll read what the petition says. Says, "Stop these developers from taking any more residential property from our neighborhoods to create commercial opportunities that put our children at risk and erode the safety, character, and value of our neighborhood. Show the value, show, and show that you value the city's families, their properties, their right to walk safe in their neighborhoods they live and play with without fear of random motorists, another commercially geared traffic passing through." Well, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, if I read that, I, I'd sign this darned thing too. It doesn't really say anything about what the issues really are. And as you've learned, there will not be a commercial establishment here. So this petition that you have, as far as I'm concerned, in my opinion, I believe is part of a misdirection for your evaluation or for your review. Katie, if you would pass this along as well. I also have two letters for you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, the first one is from Suzie Wilcox. And she signed a petition in opposition. And I'll hand this to you. What Ms. Wilcox says here is that she was approached by a woman several weeks ago to sign a petition against the rezoning. She notes that, "The woman did not inform me that they could build a large apartment building, and that they, and also did not tell me they can restrict the zoning to parking only. Also agreed to make a green. I'd much rather see parking and get cars off the street." So, I want you to have this, I want you to look at it again, because people are being told things in the public that quite frankly upset us, and we want to know the truth. A second letter to the same regard, dated today, from Anastasia Connect, to whom it may concern, "I was approached by Michelle Branch a few weeks ago in regards to rezoning efforts for the purpose of Tarp and Turtle parking lots. I wasn't informed that the current zoning would be, would allow forty-five tall apartment buildings, and I was never told there was to be a restricted covenant to control and not allow development, uh, or commercial development. I'd rather have a green parking lot than a forty-five foot apartment building." Katie, if you would. So, we hesitate bringing this to your attention, but we think it's critical for you to know on the other side of the coin, what we've been trying to clear up for the public, for them to understand, and the information that's been coming to you. But confusion reigns. Even yesterday, or a couple of days ago, you received emails from, uh, a couple of folks who've been working very aggressively with this, who Heather had to respond to, to tell them that it's not gonna allow a restaurant on the site. It would not allow future uses, uh, for businesses, and it would not nullify the approval you're giving today to allow commercial development. It, these emails are continuing from people who are pursuing this issue. I don't know if you saw those emails or not, but again, Heather had to respond to clarify those issues. The case is, and the case before you is, along with points about liquor licenses which are incorrect, and the ownership which is incorrect, there's just a mass of confusion that's been tried to throw out that we're trying to clarify for you. So really, we ask you again, and bring this back to why we're here. We're here just simply to try and make this a safe site. We brought forward the restricted covenant. We're happy to work with you in any regard that makes you and the public comfortable with it. Every time we show up here, the opponents have changed the target. And now it's changed to something else. So, in regard to the plans at the Turtle, and with the new ownership and management, and their experience, and their proof of how they're running the operation there, and with the support of your TRC, your P and Z, and your staff, and even your prior vote to support this very issue, again, we're here to work with you, and we hope to have an approval this evening. Thank you.
Heather, do you have any questions, Mr. Pressman?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Are there members of the public that wish to speak in opposition to the application? Now's the time. I'd ask that you approach the podium. State your name and address for the record, you've got four minutes. If we could make a queue, folks, of people who wish to speak in opposition, if there are, if there are more than one, please do that now, so we haven't gotta go through the whole, uh...
You, you still will have to, uh, go to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll be given time.
Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Michelle Branch. Uh, many of you have received information from me that I've spent hours poring over public records in the city, uh, which is my right. And I have brought several things to your attention. In the previously presented application that were in error, that have since been corrected, I do not apologize. I am not a professional, but you could consider me, I suppose, the Todd Pressman for my neighborhood. Um, I have gone out and I have talked to everyone. I don't think I need to explain to them what the zoning was. They see the apartment building, I mean, the, excuse me, the condos next to them. They understand what a condo is, and that it's been approved to be in that neighborhood. Um, so I'm gonna read with you, for you. I'm asking all of you, as a representative of the sixty-five petitioners who you can see live immediately close to the Tarp and Turtle, and would be absolutely affected by this proposed change, to please vote no because we wish to protect the integrity, the safety, the general welfare, and the rights to quiet enjoyment of our neighborhood at large, as well as that of our homes. This is our right. I'm not, I'm not gonna be shy about protecting it. Staff's report just doesn't give any concrete reason to justify allowing the commercial entity to mask a presence of just under two acres, which doubles their commercial abilities. Even if it's zoned parking, it doubles it, amongst otherwise completely residential properties when there is no such- There is so much current and historic opposition of surrounding homeowners complaining they already deal with enough. Just before the last public meeting, before you guys continued it, city staff said twenty-four calls, whether they're frivolous or not, to the police department on the whole street, not the Tarp and Turtle proper, in the first half of the year could be linked to them. This absolutely factors into the overall safety of the area, which could affect someone's desire to purchase a home here. There's been a terrible misrepresentation to the general public and to the public commission, Board of Commissioners, by the city staff, having not included the historic ongoing opposition, nor the many times they've sought to increase seating over the different owners who buy the same parcels of land, and the opposition of neighboring homes who on a daily basis deal with the negative effect of this commercial enterprise comings and goings through the middle of the neighborhood. A business owner buying up and demolishing homes down one whole side of Lake Tarpin Avenue is bad enough. Now with the talk of forever placing, replacing these homes with the comings and goings of restaurant patrons, their cars, and general business affairs on parking lots forever in the middle of our homesteads, we already endure the headlights coming and going well towards midnight, and even all-day noisy car engines, motorcycle revving, chatter from patrons pulled car to car to discuss where to go next, all for the sake of this one private commercial entity in the middle of the neighborhood. Commercial trash on the right-ofways as we walk our dogs and visit our neighbors. As voting members of the current Board of Commissioners, we have just presented each of you with copies of historic aerials you should be looking at now. We wanted to provide each of you with these past pictures as absolute undeniable visual proof that not so long ago, the entire area along Lake Tarpin Avenue was fully developed into a neighborhood of residences, both short and long-term. It's as if some force is trying to snuff out any evidence of the loveliness and peaceful living that existed down both sides of this treasured and somewhat historic brick road. Lakeview Neighborhood was plotted within the first fifteen years of the last century. It's a hundred years old. Even city parks that abut this residential zoning turn out their lights and close at dusk, or at least by ten PM. And what stress some of us homeowners experienced today during, quote, "peak" restaurant volume? When this restaurant limited to so-called one-seventy-seven seats? We're trying to back out of our driveways or turn onto from a side street? We have to wait for these cars to come and go? We feel the stress as if we're already on some major thoroughfare, waiting for the next major intersection light to turn green. We're not even left our neighborhoods, it's one entity. I, is that my beep, or do I have more time?
That's, that's you.
Thank you.
If I might ask, you know, I, I don't like to, but all the clapping, first we clap, then we boo, then we do. If you wanna get up and say, "I support that," great. I, I would just appreciate that, that's what we would like for it to be held.
Hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. My name is Linda Giordano. I have been a resident of the neighborhood since nineteen sixty-eight. My family had bought a house there, and we, I know as the Tarp and Turtle when it was small. And it was where boats would come up and be there, and the parking lot was very, very minimal. And it had the grounds of, like, little, um... Yes, where you would rent them out. That's all gone now, and there is just parking lot in this huge building. To see this all happening in my neighborhood, and to think that there is going to be another parking lot placed where there was a home of a friend of a family that had just died. But, in all reality, um, I, thinking of the safety of everybody that lives in the neighborhood. Another parking lot going in, my concern too is, what, what's to determine that there won't be valet parking where they have the cars coming up and then going into the parking lot? As the mayor was saying, that is it gonna be strictly just for employees who are parking on the streets at this time? If it's valet parking, think it's gonna be four times, that one car is gonna go up and down that road four times. It's gonna go to the restaurant, go to the parking lot, go back to the restaurant, go back out. So, it's not gonna minimize anything, and I really feel that to have the parking lot there, it's just gonna cause a lot more problems. And to have it go into a commercial property, as Heather had mentioned, can go from a parking lot to whatever else. Also, when they mentioned that there was going to be, um, could be some sort of events going on, that's just gonna cause a lot of havoc for all of us, where there're gonna be even more cars and more havoc for, for our neighborhood. It's just not gonna feel safe anymore. So, I ask that everybody consider and say no today.
If anyone would like to speak, uh, go to the podium, state your name, address for the record. the record.
My name is Mary Wasser. I live in the condos at Lake Tarpon Seale and Tennis Club. One of the things I wanted to bring up, the word is "change." We have change all around us. And, you know, if you look in the name of progress, in the name of financial, economic, and I understand that, but we are in the middle of homes. I have lived in the condo over 20 years. We did talk about the small Tarpon Turtle back then, I remember, I used to go. It was a hometown, quiet, and safe in many ways. I do believe that if, if we have, I believe with change, that sometimes we don't always have to go with change. I think sometimes we have to sit back and say, "You know what? Everything around us is changing. Why can't we keep a piece of what we have, whether it's, you know, like I said, living at Tarpon, you know, Tarpon Seale and Tennis?" I believe that change can cause infringement on how we live, our safety, quiet, serene, tranquility. And I do believe that, as I always, and this is what I believe, is that we need to keep that peace close to our hearts. We need to keep our community safe. Why cause havoc? Why cause crime? Why cause feeling unsafe to have to walk out of your home? And, you know, where we live, I don't know, people could be coming through our area after drinking, or, again, being very late, noise, or partying, and who's to say they can't come in our property, which has happened? We have called the police in situations, I mean, we, we look at it this way, we're very close, and when there have been problems, we have called the police to come and check things out. But why do we have to add to that? Why can't we keep it small? Why can't we keep it at peace, safe, and not in the middle of a residential area where there are homes, there are condos, there are kids, there are seniors, there are people that, you know, we live there. This is our peace of mind. This is our peace where we belong. And as neighbors, we're all here. And we want to keep it pristine. We work very hard to keep our community safe. I have called the police myself, living in the condos. People coming out 12 o'clock at night, 12:30 walking, you know, in our, in our developments late at night, being frightened, cars, headlights. I always say that change is, I agree with change, but I think we have to put a limit to change. And to keep our properties pristine and keep our people safe, take it, you know, you want to have commercial, you want to put up hotels, whatever, put it on 19. Put it somewhere where it's not infringing on our rights as people, and where we live, and we should feel safe. Not in the name of progress, not in the name of economics, and so forth. I think we're so caught up, everything, money, you know, that we forget what tranquility and life, justice, peace, have that piece of pie where we live. We can go to sleep at night and rest our heads and not have to worry. And that's all I want to say.
Are there additional members of the public that would like to speak in opposition to the application?
My name is Bridget Joyner. I live on Meyer Lane, which is the street that runs parallel to Lake Tarpon, right next to it. I live with my husband, and our three boys, and our puppy. And one thing I do want to say is to the owners of the Tarpon Turtle, thank you. Thank you for taking a struggling restaurant and turning it into a thriving business. Because what you may not be hearing enough of tonight is that it is noticed and it is appreciated by many of us. It's clear that they have experience in establishing a solid business. I want the Turtle to thrive. My husband and I frequent there. We bring our kids, we bring our parents, we bring our friends. We buy gift certificates for our neighbors. It's a great place. It's fun. But our small neighborhood is currently at a max for traffic. On the street I live on, Meyer Lane, we're not directly in the path of these cars, but they're using our street to exit and enter the Turtle. We don't have shoulders on our street, we don't have curbs, and we don't have a sidewalk. I have three boys, and they play outside. It is concerning. But beyond that, my boys are smart. They know how to behave outside, and they know to watch for cars. My biggest concern is this. When Vice Mayor Larson asked the question about what are the criteria, if you already have the parking in place, how does that affect down the road, you asking for more seats in your restaurant? If expansion truly is not the issue here tonight, then why are we requesting parking spots for seats that do not exist in a restaurant? Please ask yourselves that. Now, is more parking needed? I can't say that for sure, because I did not go in the restaurant and count the number of heads sitting in there, and were there 177, or were there 250? I have no idea. I went in there and enjoyed myself, and I'm thankful it's there. But if it's employees that are parking on the road, maybe 15 to 20 cars, there are not three lots needed for those employees to park. And again, if expansion is not the issue for this restaurant, why are we putting parking lots there? I would even concede that one lot might be helpful and necessary. But four? Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for your attention.
Again, persons wishing to speak in opposition, please go to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
It doesn't really fall in the category of opposition or in favor of. I just, I live across the street. My name is, or I have a house across the street. My name is Bruce Bodine. The residence is at 1424 Lake Tarpon Avenue. How many parking spaces are we talking about here? I mean, that would seem to be the first question to ask. Does anyone know? I mean, has that been discussed? How large are these parking lots going to be? Has it been before the planning board or the development board?
There's been no site plan submitted, sir.
Well, so shouldn't we find out just what we're talking about, then? Is it going to be a huge affair? Is it going to be a small affair?
What we can do is, when Ms. Irwella comes up, she can talk about the process. I know that you think that that should be concrete, the rest of it, but there's a process, and I'll have her to speak to that. You could use the rest of your minutes to say, "That's absurd, that's gray, I'll wait", whatever you choose to do.
No, just, Mr. Mayor, it just seems like that's the first question to be answered. You know, this is a project that we're looking at, that's going to have a restricted covenant, but we don't know what the project is, how large it's going to be, how many cars are going to be parked there. I'll leave it at that. That's, that seems to be an issue with me, because I don't have any idea. It's right across the street from me, but I have really no idea what it entails, involves, in terms of size, in terms of the size of it, you know, how large it'll be. That's number one. Number two, because I do have the residence across the street, I'd also like to know, just from a physical standpoint, because it's going to be right in my window, what kind of lighting is going to be used, or if there's going to be a restrictive covenant on that, or if I'll have to complain on a daily basis that there's lights coming in, you know, all night long through my windows when I'm trying to sleep. Now, I haven't heard anything that has addressed that either, so if we could look into that, ladies and gentlemen, I would appreciate that. The last thing I'd like to ask is, and this is sort of, as we were talking, the other side of the coin here, if indeed this is turned down, what can Tarpon Turtle do with this vacant land? Can they build houses? Or is there some other usage that they can put it to? So are they left with vacant land that they can't use? Or what else can there be, you know, for them? Thanks very much. That's really all I'm trying to find out here.
All right. Your comments are appreciated.
Thank you.
Are there any more members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
I'm Joseph Novak. I live in 302 Lake Tarpon Seale and Tennis. I'm in a building cluster that has 46 units that abut the lots that are of consideration here. I would echo your concern. Why do you need parking on four lots if we need parking for 30 more cars? But that's an issue, I guess, that has to be looked at down the road. I appreciate the improvements in the Tarpon Turtle, and my wife and I enjoy having meals there. It's much improved over the prior management. Part of this, I think, is due to the more advantageous financing that is available at this time, making it easier to sustain the business. With 246 condo units abutting these lots, it's really no question about this being a residential area. And so the changing of the zoning to commercial next to these 246 units doesn't make sense to me. I appreciate the comments Mayor Archie has brought up about sort of mission creep, and I'm hopeful that the Commission will not permit mission creep in the future. Thank you for your time.
Are there any more members of the public wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, are there members of the public wishing to speak in support of the application?
Katie Goff, 1417 Meyer Lane, Tarpon Springs, Florida 34688. Real quick, I'm going to be pretty speedy. I just wanted to say, I'm also on both sides of the coin. I'm a neighbor, and I also work for Terry. So I do live in the neighborhood as well, and I have listened to everything that everybody has said. And one thing I just want to say is, we did spend a significant amount of time really trying to clean this property up. And in doing so, it has become more successful. And because of that, we do have a lot of employees and patrons parking on the street. So our goal here is to get them off the street. As well as put in, I don't know how much this was emphasized, I know Todd mentioned it, a sidewalk. I too have a son that lives in the neighborhood, and that whole entire side has no sidewalk. As soon as you get over to the street, you have no sidewalk to walk on. So I think that's a real positive, and we did so not, I mean, all of these efforts have not been to diminish the neighborhood, but to improve it. And I do understand the concerns, and I wanted to answer Bridget's question. A couple of people said four lots, it is three lots. But our goal is to keep very plush, natural buffers. And if you look at the way that the lots are currently laid out, we do want to have a green turf as the route that we're attempting. And with that being said, it is, it becomes pretty small when you keep all those buffers and try to get the cars off the street. I would prefer to have the green parking lot as opposed to 45-foot-tall apartment buildings, and that is my take on it.
I'm Torrance L. Hunt, 1955, North Highland Avenue, Tarpon Springs. As some of you have heard, I bought the Turtle property a year and a half or so ago. And I bought it to preserve the Tarpon Turtle restaurant that we've all enjoyed for, since 1946, it's been the Tarpon Turtle. And there is no financing, somebody said, with the cheap money that's out there today. I paid cash for it. Eric Weber and his wife paid cash for all the improvements that they run in their business. So I want everybody to know, and especially the mayor, vice mayor, and the commissioners, that we have no interest in increasing the size of the seating of the restaurant whatsoever. The restaurant can barely handle the business that it has right now. So if you're going to increase seating, then you'd have to increase employees, then you'd have to increase parking. I mean, we're, it's just to an absolute max, guys, and we're just trying to get it safe, get where people can get back and forth off the street. Last Saturday night, I rode my bicycle, I live on Salt Lake, and when I got up on the hill, there was four or five people walking in the middle of the street to get to their cars. Simply with the codes that we have to abide by, I don't think we can park 40 cars on all three of those lots. And somebody also said it was two acres. It's way less than one acre all combined. It's not two acres. It's not even close to doubling the size of the original restaurant. The restaurant has a checkered past. Eric and his wife Katie are running a restaurant, not a bar. They're actually closing an hour earlier now than they did when they opened a restaurant seven or eight months ago. They only open at 10 o'clock, Sunday through Thursday, and on the weekends they're open at 11:00. They just started that in the last 30 days. So I want everybody to know, it's a restaurant. It's not a bar, it's not loud noise, and as you've been told here by some people, they do an excellent job. So everybody realizes that we need parking. Everybody realizes we need safety. And the restrictive covenant, whatever we can do, guys, it does not matter. We're not coming in the back door, as you mentioned it. We don't want more seating, barely handle what we've got. You know that there's an issue out there with that sidewalk and parking, and we'd like this to eliminate. We'll spend our money to eliminate all those problems. And there'll be a green turf parking. So when the neighbors look, it won't be houses, it won't be 45-foot condos, it will be green turf that will be used less than 50% of the time. 50% of the time, it'll just be green and landscaped parking lot. If you drive down it in the morning, it'll be green. Friday night, probably a little busy. That's it.
Good evening, Mayor Archie, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Linda Young, and I live at 98 South Highland Avenue. My husband John and I have lived in North Pinellas County for over 30 years, and have been to all the previous Tarpon restaurants located at the Tarpon Turtle. The service, quality, condition, and overall maintenance kept going downhill to the point we just stopped going. We've known Terry Hunt for over 30 years, and when we heard he took it over, we knew it was time to go back. The improvements have been phenomenal, as we would expect it, because Terry does everything first class. A few months ago, we sold our home in Palm Harbor and purchased a townhome at Lake Tarpon Seale and Tennis Club. Needless to say, we were ecstatic to have such a first-class, friendly restaurant within walking distance around the corner. We are strongly in favor of rezoning requests of the badly needed additional parking We are strongly in favor of rezoning requests so that a badly needed additional parking can be installed. Unfortunately, my husband can't walk an extended distance, and on several occasions, for patrons, there were no parking, so we left. We headed back to Palm Harbor where we moved from. Not that there aren't other great restaurants in Tarpon Springs. We know, we're friends with the owner, Tracy Suede of Currents. It's just that we're creatures of habit, and we just headed back. Parking is obviously needed, along with other improvements Terry plans to make. Sidewalks for one. Friends of ours walked over from our place one night, we drove, and they rode back with us because of no sidewalks, they weren't comfortable walking on the streets, and she did trip on the broken sidewalk. I would walk down there for takeout because it's right around the corner, but I don't because it's so cumbersome. The sentiments that I express here, I echo not only for myself or my husband, but for many other people. Thank goodness I didn't invite them to come because there wouldn't have been enough room. I just don't understand with the additional parking, how that's going to cause more noise and disturbance. I hear more noise from the recreation field across the street. I don't care. I'm not going to ask them not to play their soccer games or whatever they play over there. But, you know, I want to thank you and appreciate any and all consideration for the rezoning request so that in order for us to go out, we don't have to leave our own backyard. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bobby Davis. I live in the Tarpon Sail and Tennis Club as well. Just purchased a condo last summer. I moved down here from Tennessee. I like to bass fish. I think Lake Tarpon is a kind of a diamond in the rough in Pinellas County. Not a lot of people know it's there. They come to visit for the beach. It's a quiet place. I think that the restaurant being on the lake, and the only restaurant on the lake is an asset to the lake and the community. To address some of the things I've heard tonight, I do walk over three, maybe four times a week, and pretty much every weekend. Haven't noticed any trash on the roadway. I have noticed congestion. I've noticed some confused drivers. They want to stop, they want to accommodate the people walking, and then it backs up a little bit here and there, but I think that a parking lot would help with that a great deal. And to add to Terry speaking about the restaurant hours closing an hour early now, as opposed to what they were a few months ago, also for the noise, they play music only on Friday and Saturday, sometimes Sunday, but they have a cutoff time of nine P.M. to accommodate the community and to prevent any kind of noise complaints. I have been over there very frequently and have never witnessed any police call. So that's just been my experience, and I can't speak to every day. As far as all that goes, that's pretty much all I have to say.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Eric Weber, and I'm the owner of the Tarpon Turtle, along with my wife Katie. And I thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. We are asking for your support for the rezoning and land change so we can have the ability to put in the parking that we need, you know, so for the safety of our employees as well as the neighborhoods and the patrons. I mean, those cars parked up and down, you know, that driveway, all the way down to, you know, Keystone Road on, you know, on Fridays and Saturdays when we're busy, you know, it does create, as the previous speaker spoke, confusion, people not knowing what to do. And the people that were speaking earlier about they're going through their neighborhoods, well, I would believe that if we got the cars off the street and the street was easier, easily, more easily navigated with cars going both ways, then people probably wouldn't even look to go down those side streets and through their neighbors. You know, as Terry had spoke earlier, you know, the restaurant did have a checkered pass. And when Terry approached me about doing the, you know, doing the Tarpon Turtle, I mean, my wife and I, you know, couldn't have been more pleased, I mean, because we want to see the Tarpon Turtle be an asset to the community. You know, we've been, we've embraced this, being in Tarpon Springs, I've been in Palm Harbor a long time with my previous restaurants. I love being in Tarpon. It's a great experience. And we've worked tirelessly over this last eight or nine months as we've been open to make this restaurant an asset to the community, to keep it cleaned and well-maintained, closing at responsible hours, not offering, you know, cheap beer specials, and getting the kind of people that may cause, you know, these disturbances that would, you know, antagonize our neighbors. I don't believe we've done any of those things to create the phone calls that have been, you know, lodged against us. We employ sixty, seventy, we were as many as a hundred people were working for us during the height of season in the March, you know, and these people that are working with us, you know, they have, they have families and bills to pay, and, you know, we want to be those responsible corporate citizens. So these people have jobs, good jobs, making good money, that money that they can spend in the rest of the Tarpon Springs community, you know. My wife and I also give to multiple charities as well. You know, we feel like, you know, that the successes that we have by being in Tarpon Springs, that we should give back our community. We worked with John Gillis from Friendly Kia to give out five thousand dollars worth of gift cards to the teachers of Tarpon Springs at the, at the schools end. We're planning some other events where we're going to work for the Wheelchair for Kids, which is also another Tarpon Springs organization. You know, we just, we want to be those responsible, you know, business owners. I think that we are behaving in a manner that, that you would want us to be in this town. You know, beware of the devil you don't know. The next owners, you know, could be something, but we, we want to be here. We don't want there to be another owner. We, you know, we just want to be able to take care of our restaurant, take care of our employees, and keep the neighborhood, you know, clean, neat, safe. I mean, we send our guys up and down the street and pick up trash, just to make sure that, you know, the place looks nice. Because, you know, to me, the experience of coming to the Tarpon Turtle starts the minute you turn in. You know, it doesn't start when you open the door or sit down. It starts the minute you come down that road, and that's how we feel about that whole community. We want to keep it neat and clean and organized and park the cars properly, and so that not, you know, an obstruction to the neighborhood. You know, we have, we have had, you know, multiple complaints where the, where the police have arrived, and I've spoken with the deputies, and they have said, you know, they've been unfounded. But if there is a problem, we'll fix it. You know, it's not, you know, in our nature just to ignore it and hope it goes away. We don't want to be a problem. We want to fix these things. You know, our only goal is to be successful, a good neighbor, create a safe environment. And again, we do ask that you, that you please approve this parking request. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak in support of the application? Okay, I guess I was. Mr. Pressman, do you wish to make a closing statement?
I rarely say no to an open microphone, but I will make a quick. The reason we're here is because parking was a problem. You've read the articles, we've read the articles. I'm sure some of the commissioners and mayor, you've heard the problems are out there before the management team that's there now. We're just seeking to fix them. You heard some comments about people roaming through the budding neighborhood? Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is the restaurant here. This is where the parking occurred, this is where the condo is. There's a fence that runs all the way across here. There's, there's nobody venturing into that community. There's a fence that runs the entire length of it, so I want you to know that. You heard a couple citizens, again, talk about police calls. I've shown you that the vast majority, you've read them yourselves from your police officers responding, that they're unfounded. So again, you were told, even after I presented those to you, you were told again about police complaints. From what I've seen, they're not valid. And let me say that as a layman, I haven't heard any substantial competent evidence other than what you've gotten from your staff, who've given you a very technical, detailed report. And that's, of course, what your criterion is. So as you heard from the operators, we're here to work with you. We brought this issue forward to fix some problems out there. You can see from the picture yourself that there is a problem out there. The restaurant's there, we want to make it work as best as possible. We're here hat in hand to work with you, and for the citizens who are here, we have the greatest respect for you, and we want to work with you too. So with that, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we appreciate your attention this evening. Thank you.
I have nothing additional unless you have any questions.
I just would think of Mr. Bowden had talked in terms of why we don't know what size it would be. If you just kind of talked to some of the things that need to be done to the property that could limit the size, and I think that what was stated about the forty I heard from you, that's probably about the maximum, but nobody knows exactly what that is. So if you could just briefly speak to.
Sure.
Why that's there, you know?
The restrictions on what will actually develop for that parking lot would be based on any stormwater that needs to be managed, whatever type of surface that they're talking, that they actually decide to install there, if they need retaining walls because of the sloping of that property, and the landscaping that's required per code for the parking lot. So those all take space and would restrict actually the number of spaces that you can get out on that property.
Thank you. I don't know what's happening with the lighting. I don't know if anybody can speak to that, if that's going to be something in the future, but hopefully things can be done if it's lighting that will alleviate the concerns that Mr. Bowden might have.
The code requires shielded lighting at this particular time, but you do not have a dark size ordinance at this point for lighting. They are required to meet the requirements of the lighting section of your, of your existing LDC, and essentially that is a shielded lighting system. So if they're going to install light in the parking lot, which likely they will, they would have to meet that requirement as far as how bright it can be at a distance from the actual property line.
And I would just, to look at this is to think that in being a good neighbor, it would be one where the lightness plays, where there's safety, but also whatever can be done to alleviate that going into the neighbors.
And again, the lighting, again, the lighting can be addressed during that site planning process where the board could put a condition to that effect on that site plan.
Is it on us now? Because some of you are new to the process, I will allow you to go and make a statement. If it's something that we could answer, yes, but it's not a time. I've got a question. I've got another one. I've got another one. That's, that's not the process. But I don't want it to be where you think that we're trying to keep something from you. So if you can, if you can make it there, tell us your name, address for the record, you know. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, thank you. I'm Joan Novak. I live as well at three-oh-two A building, and we live about four feet from the fence and our extra green lot. The green lot is between the parking lots that they're proposing. What's to prevent them from getting out of their car, crossing our green lot, and going to another parking lot of theirs or the street and going to the restaurant? We would have people trespassing on our lot all the time. And when that lot was cleared, they had no authorization to clear it, and they went ahead and did it because we noticed all this noise outside our bedroom windows, which is just a few feet from our green lot. And we, we went and got in the car and drove over there, and I asked one of the men, "What are you doing?" He said, "We're clearing the lot." I said, "Well, my husband's on the board. You have no authorization to clear that lot." They went ahead and cleared it. When I went and asked Mr. Hunt about it later, he said he wants us to put it back, being very sarcastic. Obviously, you can't put bushes, shrubs, even weeds back.
Yes, ma'am. I don't know if you could address that, or what if you address this for any type of other properties and barriers? I know they talked about landscaping and stuff.
The Tarpon Sail and Tennis.
... would trespass on our lot all the time.
Yes, ma'am.
Going from their parking lot to the rest of the.
Yes, ma'am.
The Tarpon Sail and Tennis Club would have, in order to restrict access to that property, would put up, could put up signage for no trespassing, and they could also put up fencing. As well as, as well as.
If I might. We've been nice, and we can just continue being nice. I know it's a passionate issue, you've got things you want to say, but I can't hear her, and I can't hear you either. So if we could just let her explain that, and then we'll try to move on.
In the situation where there is a property dispute, there would be the option for the Tarpon Sail and Tennis Club to put up no trespassing sign, signage, or fence. There would be requirements for landscape buffers adjacent to the development for the actual parking lots that would buffer that lot, because that lot between those particular properties would remain zoned R.M. So there would be a buffer on either side of the parking that would be created that would buffer that lot. So essentially, depending upon how that buffer is set up, people are walking through trees and bushes in order to cross their property. Instead, they would be directed to a, to the sidewalk to cross down, to actually go down to the restaurant.
All right. Thank you. I think you tried to address it as much as we possibly can. Is it on us now, sir? I don't know if you have anything else to say?
No, that's all that I had, unless you want to have any other questions, I'm here to address those.
Anybody got additional questions?
I just have some comments.
You have a comment? Well, I'd like to make one. I'll let you make one. Okay? I'd say first of all, and I know we got hands up, Russ, that, but as far as the public is concerned, we closed that part. Now it's our chance. We've heard a lot of things. I've gotten a lot of things. I know we've had an education on not looking at this email and that email and what's happening here, and how you look at petitions, Russ. I could tell you that for most of us, this is not the first opportunity that we've had to, to deal with this type of issue. I just say somebody asked me today, "Do you enjoy being mayor?", and I say, "I'll see And I say that somewhat facetiously, but I say it to say this, is that anytime we're sitting here and we're trying to make a decision, there's always two sides. Usually, one side goes away unhappy. Sometimes both sides goes away unhappy because there was some type of compromise. I say this, I say that when I first started, I appreciate the restrictive covenant. I think that that should alleviate, should, the fear that that property would then be used for other commercial purposes besides the parking lot. The issue at hand initially was parking on the street, what do we do with those employees that are parking on the street and any other type of patrons? And I shared, and the chief has talked about, if this passes, then we're looking for no parking on the street. You know, which should make people in the neighborhood feel somewhat better, and I still say should. So, you know, there's been some, what I think compromises. My initial thought was, what do we do to give the commission additional opportunities for us if there's another owner? And I appreciate you saying, "We don't want to increase the seating." But my thought was if another owner comes, you know, does the commission still have the right, and I believe that they do because of conditional use, the rest of that. the right, and I believe that they do because of conditional use, the rest of that, to be able to make that decision at that time on any additional seating? And that was my purpose. And because it's trying to satisfy what I perceive as the concerns when I read the petition, the way it was written. It said there were some concerns about safety. The concerns would be that these cars are now on the street, parking and creating an unsafe condition, which should be safer now. And I could tell you this, those people that are adam-made opposed would go away, and they still think this is the worst thing in the world. I say that I appreciate Tarpon Turtle owners, and when I read this, the information that's here, there's plenty of people that are, don't really understand what's being hap, what's happening there, appreciate Tarpon Turtle. They like going there. They like eating there. They don't, but they don't want any disruption to the community. For some, I could tell you that we can't go back to 1947. I wouldn't like to go back there anyway because it's a little bit before my time, so I wouldn't be here. But there are some people not going to be happy unless we could change and tell Tarpon Turtle to get out of the neighborhood. You don't belong there. You shouldn't be there. But the reality is, they're there. So we're not even talking about whether they should be there, whether it's the right place for them, the right. All we're really talking about is should they be able to put a parking lot there that will alleviate some of the problems that's there? That's basically it. We're not talking about additional seating. You know? I guess I'm a little naive. I do believe the owners when they were saying the things they said. And that's not because I believe everything everybody says. It's just that I do believe them. Would I like for something still to be put in a restrictive covenant? Ideally, yes. But I do believe that the commission still has the opportunity in the future to deny certain things that they think is not appropriate for that neighborhood. So I can tell you, and I say this now, is that I think that a lot of things have been done to try to alleviate some of the concerns that some people have. I'm hopeful that the concern of crossing on somebody else's property and the rest of that is alleviated to the best of your ability so that that doesn't happen. So that you don't have another person saying, "I told you. See, they're doing this. They're calling the police because somebody's trespassing." And I don't think that you guys want that. I don't believe that you do. So I just say that this is not the easiest decision. I appreciate all the things. I don't know if Mr. Pressman has his attorney degree yet, but, you know, he started to impress me of some of the attorneys that I had to experience at some point in time. But I could tell you that this is a difficult decision. But I do think that for me, a parking lot there would make things better, everybody in the neighborhood. I just believe that. And I believe that you already have a certain amount of cars there. You're still going to have a certain amount of cars there. Those people are not going to go away. They're going to come. They're going to park on the street, park, and they're going to do everything else. And you still haven't done anything to alleviate the concerns of it being unsafe. To put a sidewalk in and do those other things should make the neighborhood safer. So I can say that's kind of where I stand. I accept whatever calls that might come my way tomorrow in terms of I'm not being objective. But I just want everybody in here to know that I've tried to look at this thing, and I try to be as fair as I think I can to the owners as well as to the community. And that's where I sit at this point in time. And with that, Commissioner Tarpanis said he wanted to make a comment, and we'll move from there.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I certainly want to thank members of the community who came out and spoke tonight. Certainly, the residents that always, it's always nice for me to see residents who are passionate about what they believe in. You certainly have a right to your peaceful enjoyment of the property. To answer some of the, some of the things that the gentleman in the back brought up, sorry, I didn't write your name down. The reason that you're not, you don't have answers to your questions in terms of the number of parking spaces or the lighting right now is because this is a rezoning process. So before you can get to the site plan approval process, you have to have the appropriate zoning in place. So to address some of your questions, if we approve this tonight, you will additionally have the opportunity to come and speak during their site plan approval process where you'll see parking spaces, lighting, landscaping, etc., etc. So assuming that this was to be approved tonight, you'll have that opportunity moving forward. You know, that said, this is definitely an application that I'm conflicted over. I say that because in the four and a half years that I've sat up here, we've discussed the Tarpon Turtle and had, you know, negative things associated with it, and residents in the, in the public and in the audience speaking against it, you know, several times. So historically, this is a controversial subject and piece of property. But to that point, I feel like throughout the process and throughout the years, the Tarpon Turtle, the owners at the different intervals have done things necessary that were, for lack of a better term, demanded by the public and the residents in the area, whether it be going to great lengths to address the noise complaints and the noise concerns with, you know, technology that measures sound decimals. And I mean, it's, you know, I feel like property owners have gone to the lengths to make it a successful project. Historically, the Tarpon Turtle, this was before my time, but has always, has always been there. It was there long before a lot of the townhouses and residences that are there today. And it was owned commercially then. It was a burger shack, and it's grown, yes. But still, it has always been there as long as I can remember. So, you know, to me, you always have to weigh the pros and cons. And the mayor's been absolutely spot on tonight in terms of what he said. So, you know, for this particular application, Chef Eric, I see on his shirt there, he alluded that, you know, the devil you know is sometimes better than the one that you don't. So to me, looking at the property, if it was to sit, to stay RM15, many of the complaints and the testimony that was mentioned by the public tonight is that increased in traffic or more cars on the roads, etc. So if you don't do anything and this doesn't become a parking lot, the current zoning is RM15, which, Heather, that's 15 units per acre, right?
Correct.
Residential multifamily, 15 units per acre.
Correct.
So, you know, I don't, I don't know what the three lots that are vacant total, but it's safe to say that you would certainly have somewhere in the neighborhood of seven, eight, maybe 10, I don't know, new residences in the neighborhood, which would add towards more parking on the street, more cars on the neighborhood, etc. So, let me look at some of my notes here. So, you know, I feel like the applicant has made every, every effort possible with the restrictive covenant to say, "Listen, this is what we want to do. We want to make the project better. There's still going to be another layer of approval in terms of the site plan approval process." And with the restrictive covenant, it's, it's basically in its entirety, the project, whether it's sold or not, is limited to parking. It sounds like, based on their testimony tonight, that, you know, the intention is to have an attractive-looking parking lot. I think that the record will reflect that the lighting is of concern. And again, there'll be, and that's something that members of the Planning and Zoning Board, I can tell you, they will touch on. They always do. There's members on that board that that's something that's important to them. So as conflicted as I am, I have to, I have to think that this applicant is going to attempt to do the right thing. And I feel like, you know, we have a, we have a good project at our hand, on our hands here, and that there'll be an extra layer of approval for you to come and make your comments, your concerns during the site plan approval process. Thank you.
Yes, I also want to thank you all for coming out and letting us know what your concerns are. I have been to the Turtle since it reopened and with the new owners, and I've seen all the improvements, and it's definitely a place that's changed. And I know they're concerned for safety. I believe with their conditional use, they can't make any changes. I mean, the restaurant is there. I know some of you would probably like for it to not be there, but it is there. And I think at this point, their concern is safety, and putting in that parking lot will make it better for the residents and the restaurant. And you will have many more opportunities to come in front of Planning and Zoning and in front of this board to also give your thoughts or ideas as far as the lighting and whatever their plans are going forward. So thank you for coming out, and thank you.
I have no further comments at this time.
Yes, thank you. I agree with my colleagues today. What I see different about this applicant than others I've seen come before us for other projects, is this applicant is looking to fix a problem. You know? And I can dissimilate with those that spoke today in opposition. I won't say the name, but I live near a different establishment that takes a whole different approach. And I'm serious when I, when I, when I say that, that I would love to live behind what they are proposing compared to what I have to do now. That's beside the point. I'm just saying that I just sympathize with living, living near a very loud restaurant. But what I see them doing here now is wanting to fix the problem, not so much expand and cause more issues than are already perceived. And especially with the use of that property, whenever I look at, you know, if we're rezoning or approving something, what else could go on that property? And when I, when I, when I read what could go on there, you know, a cluster of homes, apartment buildings, if you had a different commission here that would approve a commercial rezoning without covenants? We heard the, what could, what could go on there? What they, what they are proposing and are very restrictive, too, is a, is a green space parking. I mean, that, that's really, in my opinion, best-case scenario for use of that property when I'm thinking if I live near there and I wanted to eliminate congestion in the street, I wanted to minimize the possibility of noise that could be produced by these properties. That is one of the options that I, that I, that I would favor. The only thing, I'm not going to ask to, this be required, but perhaps the Turtle, as a gesture of goodwill, could help pay or pay for the fencing around their, the property of this condo association that is in between those lots. I'm not going to require that, but just, you know, might be a gesture of goodwill to do that. No trespassing signs aren't exactly, you know, effective. So maybe that could be a gesture of goodwill there. And I also feel comfortable with this, with this before us today because of the layers of approval. I mean, like has been said here, you know, it's not just we approve it tonight, and then they can do whatever they want. We have a second reading. They have to do a site plan. So many more opportunities for you all to come out and then be involved in the process for what's going, going to be there. And I can tell you from approving other things on this board, that's not always the case. And so I'm not just saying you should be happy and keep to yourself, but realize the advantages of what this, of what this owner's trying to do is correct a problem that I think will, in the end of the day, alleviate not all, but most of your concerns that you're experiencing now, and that you get to be a part of the process extensively, and that they are severely restricted as to what they can do on that property. That's just a huge benefit to me. If I'm looking at it, which I always try and do, from the perspective of a nearby, nearby homeowner. So I'm in favor as it stands now. I just appreciate how the owner has held meetings with the, with the citizens, is willing to do the covenants that restrict them to parking only. And then again, I would just suggest, we often do when there's something like this that has some controversy to it, maybe a gesture of goodwill to help pay for some fencing or some barrier to keep, to keep patrons, employees off the property without a little sliver that divides those lots. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other comments, questions, and chair will entertain a motion on the ordinance 2015 day 17 that's amended future land use from RM to CL. And this is first reading.
Move for second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapany?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. The next item is item number 19 that's ordinance 2015 day 16, Tarpon Turtle Amendment Zoning Map from RM15 to WD1 Salsa First Read. I'm not sure if there's anything additional or-
What was that, Mayor Archie?
I say, I don't know if there's something else that you want to tell us this way.
No, this is, this is simply just the zoning change. We present the information together because they are really intertwined.
Right. So with that, shall we entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapany?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. I'll take a little break. I thank everybody for coming. Y'all want to take a break? Are y'all good to go? Okay. Y'all can stay around now. Look. Item number 20 has been deferred, and that's a resolution 2015 dash 42, amended resolution 2014, that's 32 site plan approval for Bay Shore Heights.
We need to approve. Let me get Heather. Heather?
Yeah. I don't know if we need a date certain.
You're here to get the deferral of this item?
To date certain?
We don't, it will be a date certain of the 17th, but the Planning and Zoning Board will have to hear the application because there is a material change to the site plan. So that being the case, we will have that out, that hearing on the 16th of November, and then it will be followed by the Board of Commissioners' reading of that resolution on the 17th.
So the board will need to defer to the 17th?
Correct.
So moved? Roll call.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Terrapany?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 21 is resolution 2015 dash 41, reorganization Public Works Department.
Resolution 2015 dash 41, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the Public Works organization, including the revised titles, job descriptions, and pay grades for three positions, and providing for an effective date hereof its resolution 2015 dash 41 by title only.
Good evening, Tom. I'm sorry. Tom Funchen, Public Works Director. Since the department's reorganization in December 2014, we have found three positions that were performing additional duties outside their current descriptions, therefore requesting changes for the following individuals. For the Streets Department, we found that one heavy, we have found that one heavy equipment operator position within the Streets Division cannot perform all of the department's needs. So requesting that Longcastle, who is a Technician One, who has been performing the duties of a heavy equipment operator, be moved up to a heavy equipment operator. He's been an asset to the department. We've been able to accomplish all his work with his assistance, so we recommend eliminate the Technician One position and replace him with a heavy equipment operator with a 5% increase per grade. We'd bring it up to two grade levels with a cost of about $4,400 to the department. Stormwater, Public Works Department, Michael Switz, Technician One, had performing duties outside his position in that description to include stormwater, public education, high-risk facility inspections, which were previously handled by the MPDS position. This will allow the supervisor to focus more on projects and handle the day-to-day routine work. We would like to upgrade his position from a Tech One to Tech Two with a, recommend a 5% increase for the new position. Parks and Parkways, Greg Dobbins, who now has a position of operations and maintenance coordinator, would like to move him to Assistant Parks Maintenance Supervisor and Arborist. He is the city's arborist as of now. He's taken on critical duties and responsibilities. Also, he's become heavily involved in a lot of the city's beautification projects, i.e. Dodekanese Boulevard and soon to be Alter 19 upgrades. We'll eliminate his current Lead Worker Two position and increase his wages to reflect the requirements of new position at a 5% increase per pay grade, costing about $8,900 to the department, which we'll be able to absorb in all three of those budgets. able to absorb in all three of those budgets.
And just let me note that these are, again, you know, we've talked a lot about reorganizations and what we've done. These are all three internal people who've been working here that through training, the abilities, we are changing these positions to move them up because of their abilities and trainings has increased while onboard with the city. So, again, all of these are because of that and because they got skills at a higher level, and we're changing their position to that level because of their accomplishments while onboard. So, again, for the training and stuff, Tom, and your department, get them trained, and then to compensate these employees properly because by moving them up into a different position, it gives more access to the city for their skills that they've got the additional training for.
Any questions? Shall we entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther's not in the room. Commissioner Terrapani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Well, since, you know, it seems like everybody is going to take a little break anyway. I just wish this paused right now and then we can pick it up in a couple seconds. So, I want to turn the gavel over when I have to go to.
We don't have a form anymore. I'm the only one here. You and I are in charge of the vice mayor. I'm going to start doing something.
Workshop meeting there, so in the interest of time, let me, let me speak to the proposal there. So appreciate your time. I realize it's a lengthy meeting and sincerely appreciate your time and consideration of this. So following our workshop meeting last week, I realized, or I was reflecting on the meeting, and I realized and that for you, it's a cash flow issue. For me, it's a relief of liability. So again, there's a, there's a huge distinction between what it is on your side of the books that you got, that Mr. LaCorus needs to re, to work through over the next couple of years, based on what we talked about last at the workshop meeting. So I went back and I took a look at it, and what I have proposed and what you have in front of you is a concept that I sat down with Mr. LaCorus earlier this week and I presented to him. And what it is, is what I'm proposing is that we leave the lease payments, the scheduled lease payments, in place for the next decade, for the next 10 years. No change whatsoever, no reduction whatsoever in those lease payments. So for the next 10 years, Mr. LaCorus and the, in the finance department have the opportunity to count on that money, count on the funding, the, the lease payments is currently built into the lease. In year, in, in year 2027, what we have, and it's on the right-hand column, it's, the lease drops to $1 a year. So dropping down to the bottom, the total cash flow there is $4,161, just to orientate you to the numbers, if you will. So let me take a step back. The columns that, the third, the column that says cash flow, that's what the current lease payments obligate the hospital to today. Scenario one and scenario two are the two concepts that we talked about at the workshop last week. Scenario three is what I understand Mr. LaCorus has, has presented. I, I got that information earlier today. And then the last column there, the alternative hospitals funding is, is what I'm speaking to right now, so thank you for letting me clarify that. So specifically, as I said earlier, we would keep the lease payments in place. That's the 2% adjustment every year for the next 10 years. Starting in year 2026, for the calendar year 2027, the lease payments would drop to $1 a year and remain so. Dropping down to the bottom there, there'd be a total of $4,160,000 in cash flow. What I would again try to encourage you, let's talk about present value dollars. And I believe, based on the information that we shared with you again last week at the, at the workshop, I, I believe that everyone's accepting that the, that the discount rate is, matches up to what the audited financial statements are that we, that we give to the city in accordance with our lease. So based on the present value of those $4 million, that generates $3 million in present value dollars to the city, and it allows the hospital to relieve the liability that we have to the city, a total of $2.9 million. That $2.9 million, I will reinvest back into the hospital. This scenario allows me to move forward with the, with the project of the hospital as soon as we can get funding from the foundation and also the hospital come up with additional funding. I know that part of Mr. LaCorus' concept was there's going to be no, no funds would, would move over, no relief of the debt would move over until the project's completed. Basically, I've got 10 years to get this project done. I plan to do it much quicker, but again, the project will be done way before this scenario, you know, before we hit the $1 a year there. So you know, Mike, you know, we started out talking about $6 million. I, I appreciate and respect the fact that that's not, it's, that's not something that's, that's the city financially could afford to do. I believe that the $2.9 million in relief off of the, off of the current liability that the hospital has to the city is a reasonable solution. I would like to echo some of the sentiments that were made at the meeting last week, particularly by Commissioner Terapani. This is your building. This money is going to be reinvested into your hospital. And we do save lives there every day, and this hospital deserves to have a first-class ER. We are going to hit 26,000 visits this year. In the past five years, we've seen a growth of 2,000 visits per year, and we are at a capacity there, and we're at risk of not being able to care for just the citizens of this community if we don't do something with the, with the configuration and updating the center there. Clearly, we are third in a, in a market of three here with, you know, the other two competing hospitals as far as what we look like there, so. The, the project would allow us to have private rooms. It would allow us to have adequate workspace. It allows us to move MRI service inside the hospital, and many of you know what I'm referring to there. So that's the proposal that I have there. I, I would again reiterate that this is your hospital and that these funds are going to go into the facility. The hospital will make up the difference here. As we've shared with you earlier, we have committed, we've already spent $53 million with the Scott, this project along with the Palm Harbor. It will total $70 million that we've invested here. That besides the $50,000 that we provide back in community benefits each and every day in terms of, of providing care to those that are unable to pay their, their bills, to the, to people that don't have the resources that many of us have. Those are additional community benefits that we provide to this community. So I thank you for allowing me to speak to this, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, I'm not sure if this is going to be for Mr. Burgum or Mr. LaCorus. I, I had a dollars and cents question. In Mr. LaCorus' backup, it mentions the one possible proposal lowering the hospital lease to a set amount of $300,000. And it goes on to say that that brings a total general fund expenditure to $3,160,000, which you can see on the next page, the far-right column, which is the lease reduction per year gets to that figure. And then on the new document from the hospital and the, because they're comparing it to the city manager's recommendation, at the bottom, they say the net capital contribution to the hospital is $1,700,000. I'm, I'm just trying to compare the proposals. I'm trying to figure out.
You should have, did you get this agenda addendum? That'll show you the taxpayer general fund translation. I respect the hospital and their numbers, but my only concern in numbers is the numbers of that's taxpayers' general fund money. And that translation is in there, and the translation from theirs is $6,658,055. That's how much money of loss of taxpayer general fund would be generated by their proposal.
I believe we are speaking to the total cash payments over time, over the remaining 25 years.
I've been thinking about the same amount of money all, the whole way through. That's how much it'll cost the, that's how much the general fund taxpayers' money, it'll be less if we go with that plan of yours.
I guess the question I had, Mr. Burgum, was on toward the bottom of the document that you handed us under the city manager's recommendation, at the very bottom where it says net capital contribution to hospital, $1,700,000. What is that figure? That's the figure that?
Yes, that's the present value of the reduction in the lease payment that Mr. LaCorus is recommending here. So if you look in year, the very last year of the lease payment, where the actual dollar amount that we would pay, that we're obligated to pay the city under the current lease agreement is $539,000. You see that, that dollar amount there?
Yes.
Versus the 300, you take the present value of those dollars today, you sum up those, and it totals $1,700,000.
Okay, thank you. I may have additional questions or comments, but I'm good for right now.
Anybody else have? I know somebody that's that new math, you know, they're doing now.
I have some general comments.
Yeah, I have some comments too, man.
I, I go to Commissioner Banther and.
Thank you. I mean, obviously, everything's there for the workshop, but you know, I appreciate what, what the hospital does, and we definitely want to partner with them. I think we're all in support of the ERs, just how we, how, how we pay for it. We kind of left the workshop under the assumption, if you will, under the freezing at $300,000. And I, I do understand how we have to look at it with the, with the present values of the city and the net capital con, uh, uh, contribution. We can't just look at it, the dollars today are not, not the same as dollars 2020, years from now. I, I'm just, I'm just speaking just, just out, out loud here. I mean, it does, it does commit a, a, a good bit more cash flow-wise for this new scenario where it continues on for 10 years as normal and then goes to $1. The benefits of that, I see is that, A, you know, where we assume we money the most, which is currently, we're not losing that money for 10 years. We have 10 years to, to make appropriate arrangements to make sure we don't have interruptions in operations or in the budget rather, based off if this gets approved by, by, by the voters. I think it's, I don't want to say it's easier to understand by the voters. I think they're both straightforward, but one thing about it is, well, sorry for leaving here for me numbers. I'm, I'm trying to do this math in my head. I mean, in, in looking at, if, if we're, if we were going to forgive lease payments, which I know it's still a dollar, but that's forgiven, I would rather forgive them later on than earlier on because the money means more to us present value today than it would 10, 10, 10 years from now. That, but that being said, it is more of a contribution from the city as far as cash flow goes. Under, under the new scenario, under the $300,000, so I'm still a little bit unsure of so, so my, my comments have to say that I'm not outright opposed to it, so.
Go start, Ben.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just say, obviously, every, like Commissioner Banther said, everything stands from our last meeting. Certainly, you know, I'm a believer and a supporter in the hospital, and I, I know that we need to do something, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, with the new proposal from the hospital, I can certainly appreciate the creativity in trying to get there and trying to, you know, work something out with the city that's acceptable to all parties. My concern with that is where the city is going to replace that income, okay? So, you know, as you know, we don't, we're not in the business to make investments. So the investments that we have, you know, they, they kind of stay the same, and they don't have a huge return on investment. Like, we pointed that out at our last meeting. If you look at the, the property appraiser site, it shows a value of $30 million on, on the, on the hospital and our facilities, and a lease payment of $300,000 is, you know, about a percent. So, you know, in terms of an investment, in a, in a return on investment, an income associated with that type of facility, that's not very much. So, you know, in, in year 2028, or 2027, you know, we, and granted, there's 10 years to strategically plan for that when the lease with, with the hospital's proposal go to $1. Ultimately, my concern is where, where and what and how are we going to replace that income if we were to look at the city manager's proposal, which is to hold the lease constant at $300,000? So, you know, obviously, we don't have a crystal ball and the future's unknown, and, you know, we could, we could plan for the future and say, okay, in year 2027, we're not going to have any income, and we're going to have to replace, we're going to go from $416,000 to a dollar. To me, that's, you know, that's a little bit, as much as I appreciate what the hospital's doing in their creativity, you know, the, the unknown as far as where and how we're going to replace that income is concerning to me. Especially when we know as economists that, you know, we're going to see a recession somewhere in between 2016 and 2027, right? I mean, that's, that's a trend. We see that every 10-year, 10, 12 years, so it's coming, okay? I mean, so at, at, at that point, in the, in the next 10 years, when is it going to come and how long is it going to last? And how close is it going to be to 2027 when, when that $416,000 worth of income that we have disappears? So everything aside, you know, I appreciate the creativity, but the unknown for me is a little bit overwhelming. You know, and I'm, I'm still willing to try and, you know, determine a way to figure out how we ultimately get to a higher net capital contribution to the hospital, because I know that that's what you're trying to look at. But the, the future, the, the unknown of the future and where the city will replace that income is just a little bit overwhelming for me.
Commissioner Seber.
I guess that the unknown is overwhelming to, I guess, most of us. There were a couple of other scenarios that we have here, and one is to reduce the amounts by $83,000 a year or $125,000. I don't know if you all have that, those pages. And that almost is easier on my mind, but again.
Is that scenario two?
That's, that was on page, on this page that had our current amount, and then decreasing the lease by $83,333 or, and then $125,000. We could bring it down to a contribution of $2 million, $3 million, $4 million.
Is that, that must be scenario two, Mr. LaCorus?
No, that was one of the first original drafts of scenarios.
Okay.
I, I've really replaced all those with this one recommendation here.
Yeah, I know, but I was relooking at all of them again because.
Those were budgetary contribution type. That, that was the budget contribution that you're talking about. The original one was the budget contribution.
Right, the budget contribution rather than decreasing it by that amount. And I went back to that again only because it just seems less of a gamble. But still a gamble because you wonder where we're going to, I mean, it's still affecting our general fund and where we're going to get this money. We still have, you know, we're a full-service city and, and, you know, have our commitments where our residents don't want to increase taxes. But it's hard to, I think, to decide on something for 24 years, for me. You know, without having to go back and look at it again in five years or, you know, making some kind of decision that we say we're going to go back and, and see where we are in five years or, or eight years because of not knowing what our economy is going to be or what will happen.
I, I, I'd like to just, you know, get a little information from my old city manager and our finance director. I'm sure Mr. Burgum has run this past his finance people, you know. He might have just came up with it himself, but I think that that's the way it works. And I, I'd just like to know where, where you stand at. And then if y'all could just explain how we came up with the, the break-off. I got one scenario saying that in '26, $2026, '27, the money is on the hospital's side, and I got one saying is on our side, and I'm not sure whose side it's going to be on, you know? I mean, the one showing is on one side, one showed was on the other side.
Again, their language and their, their paperwork is theirs. If you look at what I provided you, here's a synopsis of what you've seen from the finance director and myself about the impact in our numbers. That's what's in that document I provided you. There is, there is the impact. You'll see at the end what the actual lease reduction is, and that's the translation. Again, every document they give, I have to translate to you into our terms, our financial terms and our taxpayers' terms. You should have that on that sheet to see.
And I do, but on, on the sheet that we have, it shows in '26, '27 that we, we would, we would be getting the dollar and they would be getting the $416,000. But on the other sheet that Mr. Burgum gave me, you know, we would be getting $416,000 and the dollar would start till the next year.
And I, and I, and I can explain that, Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me. I know initially when I met Ms., Mr. McLor, LaCorus, pardon me, I had it going out nine years. I went back and I ran an additional year, so that's why you see that additional year added to it.
Oh, so there's been some little changes.
I gave an additional, we added an additional year of full funding at the lease rates.
I, you know, I told you, I'm just one plus one.
Nah, I understand.
I can tell where money's shifting from one side to the other side. I, you know, the rest of that is, is beyond me.
Yeah, so.
But I, I do, I would like to know what your perspective is and what our finance director's perspective is as it relates to this change. You know, my, just from the, from where I sit, I would say that there's a, a long time to, to make that up, but it's got to be made up some kind of way. The bottom line says that if you're going to get X number of dollars and you don't, and you use money now for a specific thing and you don't get it, then there has to be some idea. So I, I just want to know whether you can support that concept and whether our finance director can support that concept in finding that money 10 years from now when you might not be here, and he might not be here either. But we have a fiduciary responsibility, not just to ourselves, but to the citizens as a whole and the future commissions, you know?
That, that's the whole problem and dilemma from the finance point of view and our point of view. Yes, for the next 10 years, this scenario for probably as long as I'll be here, I don't know, Ron's young, he might be a young, but we're not going to be. For the point of those 10 years, that's fine, but again, the, the point where you have to look at in this, you see the numbers that start in that year, starting at $416,000. It's probably at that time going to be quarter mill, over quarter mill, wherever it is. You've got to decide on a legacy-wise, you know, in 10 years with an unknown. And where we go, you know, Ron and I can only go so many years, and that's even the first five years is unknown. This is what you'll leave in 10 years, the commissions after you with. And you have to decide if, if you're comfortable in them looking back and you're leaving whatever is going to be a quarter mill or more of those monies to make up, starting at $416,000 to over a half million dollars. You have to leave that for the last 13 years for those other commissions to try to find and stuff. And, and what is the economy in the 10 years going to be? What is going to be then? It's, you know, again, it's a lot about what Commissioner Seber talks about. Now you're really, you know, you're projecting, I don't think anybody in this world, even your best financial people are going to say where it is, but while for the time you're on board and your next group's on board, yeah, it, we're getting all the money and revenue we expected. But you see what you're leaving the last 13 years of commissions. And you as a board have to decide if, if that's what you want to do to those commissions or not. And I think that's just the basic question. Again, and also you got to realize, I don't care enough, we talked about a $3 million contribution. Our $3 million to them is 1.6, but it's still general fund money that goes for the citizens that are used to finance everything we do. The proposal here is a $3 million investment. This is 6.6 million investment. You're investing 6.6 of taxpayers' money into that emergency room with this proposal, and the one they gave you was three. So the other thing, whatever their number, whatever it means to them, I don't care about, because that's not me. He cares about it, but I don't care about it, and you shouldn't care about it. Your number is 6.6 with their proposal, is three for this other one or somewhere in between. And that's just the bottom line. You can talk all the finances that are possible, but that's their business, this is our business. And with their plan, you would be making a $6.6 million investment of taxpayers' money.
Ms. Mayor. I, I can wait, so.
And I just wanted to hear something from the finance director, but, you know, this is kind of open. We, we're here. It's a big decision. It's not a light thing to be talking about millions of dollars and which side it's going to be on. So you definitely will have the opportunity to speak to it.
You know, respectfully, Mr. LaCorus, this is our hospital. This is not the, this isn't my hospital. It's your hospital too. So when you talk about that's their business, our business, these funds, 100% of these funds are going to go into the hospital. And we certainly have made the financial commitment to the community. We've invested the community. So I think it's a little bit disrespectful to suggest it's their hospital. It is your hospital. That's what makes this community what it is.
Mr. Burgum, in all due respect, you don't want me to go back to my original position, and I'm sure the commission doesn't want me to go back, that before you put that emergency room in Palm Harbor, you should have put that money in that, that emergency room here. We're not here to debate that and go back to that point.
I'm happy to.
But I can tell you this, and you know it very well, that that check can be wrote for that thing now, and you're trying to change these numbers around, and I'm telling you, I didn't say that. I'm talking about your figures. I'm not talking about the hospital. You know I'm talking about your figures, and you can cook them things any way you want to be what it means for you, but you know what it means to the taxpayers. And let's not try to pull these farce and some of the stuff that's being pulled because you don't want to go there because we'll have a lot more information to go, and it's not going to be productive for this commission to make the decision if we have to go there to some of the other things that's gone wrong along the way.
Well, I, and I, I'd definitely get to you, but I gotta get to my finance director because I, I, I say, and, and I'm trying to look at this objectively. I know, as much as I respect the president, CEO of Florida Hospital, and I, I know of his commitment and the hospital's commitment, this was looked at by the finance. He didn't just make these numbers up. And if I don't listen to my finance director and I don't listen to the city manager, I might as well not be sitting here. I could just go out and ask the first person I see, what you think, and if they say vote against it, that's what I do. So I'm just saying, I respect everybody. I give everybody a chance to say something. But I like to hear from my finance director what he thinks of the numbers.
Well, I know, as you know, when budget times comes, you know, how difficult it is for the general fund to try to, you know, balance the budget. I can't imagine in 10 years having to try to find, you know, $416,000. As you know, in the general fund, the only thing we could control is the millage rate. So if you're trying to look for choices then in 10 years, and all of a sudden you've got $416,000 chopped out right there, we've got to find that somewhere else, or we've got to look at, you know, we start, you know, if the, hopefully the, you know, the economy, as Mr. Terapani is saying, you know, hopefully it improved, but if it goes down within the 10 years, sales tax, if we lose a communication service tax, other than revenues, if that's all of a sudden gone, do you have to look at, you know, cutting services or something? You know, I would hate to have to make that decision in 10 years.
Thank you. Oh, you know, I, Commissioner Banther, you said something. I'll open up the public comment that we have. Anybody that'd like to speak to this should speak to this, but you said that you had something.
Just so there's some, and I've said this before and I'll just say it again. So there's somewhat of a clear lesson here. It's not a matter of Florida Hospital does their kind of accounting, and we do our kind of accounting, and so-and-so's make numbers look. There's, when, when you have a capitalized lease, there's standards by US GAAP that you have to abide by in how you account for the lease. The way the hospital, and I'm not defending them, I'm just, just point of order. The way they're presenting this to us is the way any business would with a capitalized lease. It's not them trying to, to take numbers to look better for them. This is exactly what they do. They have to take the lease and pretend and then discount it as if they went out and borrowed the money and bought the building. That's how they, they legally have to account for it that way. Now, we have our way. Now, it's not one way is right and one way is wrong. Just a little bit of clarification on that. The, you know, account major and me just has to say that because it just bothers me when there's disputes on that. It's just, it, it's, when you have a capitalized lease, the less C and the less R account for the lease differently, and that's normal. So just so there's some, some, you know, some, some, some understanding of that, and that's all I have to say.
And with that, Marcus said the other.
Good evening. My name's Charles Samarkas, 1110 South Florida Avenue, Tarpon Springs. I'm co-chairman of the Helen Ellis Memorial Foundation in support of Florida Hospital, and I'm in support of this proposal. I'm going to talk to you a little more personally because I know some of you, I've known the mayor for a long time, Jeff and Rhea through my wife. But I'm going to speak to you about having a grandfather whose boat is the city of Tarpon Springs boat now, who is a sponge fisherman, who I actually went to the emergency room with when he was alive. And as a son, I took my father to Florida Hospital's emergency room, but they were full one time, so we ended up going to Meese Countryside. As a young boy, I was taken from this school, which I was in this room for science. This was actually, they used to have bunsen burners in here. I don't know who else had Miss Timmins back in the day. But this was my science room. I think that was the last time I was here. I went to the emergency room from this school and then in high school. And, you know, God forbid, if I have to go again, I'd rather go in Tarpon Springs and not have to go somewhere else. And one of the reasons, and Bruce has heard me say this, and he cringes. And one of the reasons, and Bruce has heard me say this and he cringes when I say it, but I served at Morton Plant. I'm a lawyer, I'd work in Clearwater, my firm has been active at Morton Plant. When I was asked to serve on this board, I said, my joke about the hospital was, I told my wife, if I'm gonna take me to Helen Ellis, take me to Vincent's and save on the ER charge, because that's where I'm gonna end up. And so when I first was approached and I met the folks from Florida Hospital, I was so impressed. I said, what are you guys gonna do for our hospital? And, you know, I understand Bruce's emotions, I I believe, um, Mr. Lacorius has the best best interest for the city at heart. I don't take any offense to that, 'cause I think he looks at it as his hospital and everyone looks at it as their hospital as well. But the one thing Commissioner Terrapani said that I would take a little bit of issue with and only because I look at things from a different perspective when you said, we're not in the business of investments. I would actually argue to the contrary, because you're in the business of investments and you're investing in lives of the citizens of this city through the police and how much you allocate to them, through the fire, through the resources, and now through the hospital. And I understand that this isn't an investment that you can say, we're gonna take two point one million dollars and we're gonna earn five percent and we're gonna make this money. The next commissions are gonna have hard decisions on how to do this. But what we're asking for too is to use our proposal so the citizens of Tarpon Springs can say, we have the input, if we want to invest, to be able to do that. And then through whatever creativity you all come up with, we at the hospital, and I've told this to Bruce, I think that I've seen it already, we have additional doctors that are coming into this area to work with the hospital. They're buying homes in Tarpon Springs, there's gonna be additional clinics and their offices are gonna spring up. They're gonna have people, they're gonna have businesses that are gonna come in to take care of it. I think that this is gonna more than pay for itself, but honestly, I look at this a little more selfishly. I wanna be one of the people that say, I was part of a city that said, we're partnering, because by the way, I've got an unenviable task to go in the community and raise millions of dollars too, not through taxes, but just through fundraisers and saying, hey, who can give and who can donate and who's gonna step up. We look at this as three levels, when we as a foundation, we said, the hospital's contributing millions of dollars, we know that. We're gonna go raise and the foundation's committed, we're gonna raise the money. And we're asking the city, through its citizens, to vote to be able to do that as well. And we're asking this so that jointly, through this hospital, through this city, which frankly, I love, I grew up here, I live here, I hope my children live here and I wanna stay here. But, you know, when my parents were in, both my mom and dad were ended up in that emergency room and I wasn't gonna take them there before until I got involved in the hospital. And I don't know if you all have had the chance to go, I know people have supported. It is amazing what's happening, but we're talking about saving lives. So the numbers, whatever the numbers are, I think that's gonna be a very difficult decision. But I also have faith in each one of you and the people that are coming in the future to be able to make those decisions. And I don't wanna see taxes raised, but if someone says, if I give an extra five or ten, twenty dollars a year, am I gonna save lives, my children, your children, everyone else? I think that that's a great return on the investment. So I stand up here today as a third generation Greek guy that doesn't sponge fish anymore, but still loves the city and the people of it. And I just ask to give your support behind, allowing us to go forward and ask the citizens to do it. I thank you for your time, I appreciate all the efforts that everyone's doing, and I wish y'all a good night.
Let's just let them have public comments, then we'll come back and, and I didn't know that, that he misinterpreted what you said.
Yeah, that's all I was just saying.
No, I said that, I admit that, I just said I took a different tape on, I was.
That's all right, no disrespect.
Hi, Raj Salu, nine six seven, Bayshore. Uh, I'm here in in really a couple of roles, I'm uh, I'm on the board of the hospital, been there since two thousand. Uh, lived through a couple of uh, changes of ownership, as it were. I've been through a number of uh, reports by the auditors that included, uh, for many of you who go through audits of organizations, statements that said they questioned whether this organization would survive. And that started in, uh, I think nineteen ninety nine, it was there when I got there. It was there when it was bought by community, university community. And it was only this year was the first time that letter was removed from the audit of Florida Hospital. So it has been successful. Uh, as you talk about the investment, uh, it could be on the books for twenty eight to thirty million, but it certainly wasn't worth that when it was picked up. Uh, its value was, in essence, dead, and certainly the auditors felt that's where it was gonna go. Uh, we do need the emergency room. Uh, Charlie and all the folks who've spoken in the previous meeting you've had, talked very heavily about why we gotta have it. Yeah, we do, and I think you all recognize it, is this a value to the community, certainly, you recognize that. The issue facing the commission, I think, and particularly Mark, is what do I do when four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars falls away from me eleven, twelve years from now? That's a pretty difficult job and a and a big problem. I'd suggest an alternative, this year, we, now I'm also the chairman of the Budget Advisory Commission or Committee for for the board. And we struggled this year finding dollars to get that balanced in the budget. Uh, if we were to take this year's fund, uh, let's say it's three hundred or whatever the alternative, three hundred and something, three thirty. And every year for now, for the next eleven years, we just wrote it down by thirty thousand dollars. If you did that, you didn't lose four hundred and sixteen, every year you've gotta find another thirty. We've been able to do that in the budget programs for the last eleven years. At the end of that eleven year period, you're now down to zero and you aren't losing anything. It's not, it was thirty thousand last year, this year it's nothing. However, if our finance director were to take the funds that will be paid by the hospital and put in a special account, you'd have something approaching two point six million dollars. And that's the dollars that you have now taken on what they've paid, haven't recognized it, just put it into a special account, and you've got two point six million dollars to add to your reserves that you can use for whatever may be the problem in a bad year. That still solves the city manager's problem of how do I wean myself away from this cash flow reasonably without killing my budget and have a rainy day fund in the bank, which would be the two point six million bucks? Now, how do I get there? Well, if you take, uh, they expect to give you forty, four million, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. If you take thirty thou, three hundred thousand dollars over ten years, uh, and cut it in half or take thirty thousand off, instead of three million, you get about a million five. The difference is, in fact, what you're gonna have extra, uh, and that you'll just put into a special savings account. So it doesn't come as a major, how do we get four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in one year? You don't. You've got two point six sitting in the bank that you can use and you've had to find thirty thousand dollars a year for ten years, starting from today's level. That's easily done, I don't think that is an emotional problem. We've gotten this issue one now on emotions and people wanting to take strong positions to recognize they're the biggest guy on the playground or something along those lines. I think it's time for all of us to come together and find what's the right thing to do for the city. It helps the the hospital, which been been grown from little value to one that's now highly valued in the community. And how do we help the city, uh, live with a reduced income rate over the period of the uh, of the program? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tim Kafalas, uh, first somebody left their glasses here. First of all, if you turn the air down a little bit, you could probably save some of that money, it's freezing in here, I'm sh, I'm shaking, it's so cold.
I'm wearing shorts, Tim.
I'm wearing shorts because I came from work, I work in shorts, so I can pay my taxes. Tonight, you're once again discussing just what to do to help the hospital to make a new emergency room a reality. For several years, we have heard Tarpon Springs wants to be self-sufficient, determined to be master of its own destiny. We are also here about the quality of life in Tarpon Springs. What is it that people look for when moving to an area? Good schools and a highly rated community hospital, and of course, jobs. Some years ago, when the hospital was almost sold to another organization, the city stood firm and fought to keep the hospital a community hospital. It was thought that it was important to protect the community hospital to make sure we have a fully functional hospital. In many areas of concern, when the city contemplates major decisions, experts are brought in to help determine and advise a direct direction to go. We as a city have entrusted our hospital to experts, we found them to be honest, knowledgeable in their management of our hospital. It's my belief that you as a commission have an obligation to make sure the hospital is able to properly care for the medical needs of Tarpon Springs. If we are truly going to be a self-sufficient hospital, in the past, the city has found a way and I'm confident that once again, you will find a way to make sure we have a higher standard of living in Tarpon Springs because we have the state of the art hospital. For many of us, our first knowledge and use of the hospital begins in the ER. I would be curious to see how many people are stabilized in the ER and then elect to transfer to other facilities and why they transfer to other hospitals. In addition, the first impression is important. I suggest that you as commissioners, visit other area ER facilities and see for yourself why we need to improve our hospital. I've had four visits to the ER, I've had one to another hospital and I've, it's far suppressed in quality of here to the other hospital that I went to. And I even told my insurance company I would not go to the other hospital if I had to go again. Thank you.
Is that it? Well, we we back to face with a decision, I I could tell you, everybody comes and, you know, this is another one of those passionate issues that, you know, um, I understand where everybody's at. Um, it's one that sometime I say, man, you know, it'd be glad to, it would be good for me to not have to make any decision, you know? Somebody else would be here, they'll do it, but hey, right now, I'm here and I could tell you, and I've said it before, anybody that get up and they wanna talk about the hospital and they wanna talk about the need for emergency rooms, hey, you, I don't think nobody up here says that there's not a need for the emergency room. But I could tell you this, and this is where I look at even with the scenario that's that's sit there. And if I ask, our finance director and I ask my city manager, in ten years, if we do this, will we probably be raising taxes? I'm probably gonna get a yes. Now, I can tell you right now, that doesn't make me feel very comfortable. It doesn't make me feel comfortable at all. Why? Because I feel like all I did was just transferred my duties to somebody else, something down the line, ten years from now. And when they're sitting around talking about raising taxes and they're looking at me, 'cause I plan on still being here ten years from now, I won't be here, I'll be in Tarpon. Why did you do that? Well, we thought it was best for the hospital, what about us as citizens? Well, we thought it was best for you too. I don't think people are gonna look at it so favorably as we easily get up there, write these letters, say that. I'd say to those people, 'cause, you know, I have the opportunity to, when you go out on the campaign trail, let's hear you campaign about raising taxes. Then when you do that, then I'll be persuaded that you are serious about what you talk about. Because if you're not gonna do that there, then you look at these numbers the way I look at them and say, hey, we are working from the reserve that the city manager has told us about, our finance director has told us about. So we're not just talking about the money that's gonna be missing from the hospital, we're talking about the reserve too. How do we get the reserve, stop using it and stop using this money and the rest of it, let's see how much money it would be? Everybody that comes up to this podium here from the hospital, I respect. I respect them as an individual, first and foremost, I respect what they have to say. But, you know, as I sit here, I and I try to figure out, I I say, it's probably easy for me to say, you know what, I support this. Let's just put it out there to the taxpayers and let's see what they do. And I I I, if you ask me, is this the best thing that we can do to help the hospital by doing this scenario here of a dollar, dollar, dollar? I I tell you, I don't think that it is, I don't think that, you know, I I could tell you right now, I want it to be a partnership. I believe in a partnership. I believe that we should put some dollars into the hospital, even though when I leave here, when I left here, people that I respect tell me I'm a jerk for thinking about putting any money in that hospital out there. And they say, why are you doing that? You know, Florida Hospital's got more money than, well, you know, we'll leave it right there. And I tell them, because it's a partnership, it's our hospital, we should contribute towards that. But where is that amount at? You know, I appreciate everything that's been done at that hospital. But if you look at it from the perspective of, yes, if we did that, that Roger did, and those numbers was kinda fast there. Thirty thousand here, thirty thousand there, couple of under the table, back over here. I know what I, well, I was looking at my finance director for some some eight minutes and he was looking at like, man, I I'm not sure if I follow him. So I knew I wasn't really adept at following that. But I'm just saying is that simple math, you know, I know future value and the rest of that, but for what I'm concerned, it's all present value. If I'm here, I'm present, whatever value it has in is what I got. Looking at the the way that they do accounting and the rest of that, that's beautiful, that's a beautiful thing. You know, it is, it's great. But when everything happens and the rubber meets the road, in two thousand and twenty seven, whoever's sitting here is not gonna have four hundred and some thousand dollars to deal with for the 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 general budget concern. I don't care if you call it, it ain't four hundred thousand dollars then, it really technically is only two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars, it doesn't make a difference. On paper, it's not gonna be there. I'm looking for, and I can tell my colleagues, I'm looking for where's that balance at for us to help the hospital? We know our city manager would say, and he was trying to tell us, don't do nothing. But I believe we should do something. I believe we should leave from here saying, we support the hospital, we support going forward with the ER. We can't pay for it, you know? We can't pay for it, the citizens can't pay for it. And I can tell you right now, the first time you talk about raising taxes, the day tomorrow or ten years from now, and somebody look back and see why you did it, somebody's gonna be very, very upset, you know? So while I respect this and I still am somewhat confused, just because some of us say three hundred thousand dollars gonna start in sixteen, seventeen, I would say it's not gonna start that year. And I guess there's a reason for that, that just, when will it start? Is it seven thousand, I mean, seven million, two hundred, or is it six million, nine hundred? I don't know where that three hundred thousand dollars go, it's different on both spreadsheets, you know? But I do know this, is that we need to be able to say, we support what's happening at the hospital. And and I I just want that to be clear, this is, has nothing to do with whether I personally support it as an individual. Been around here for sixty two years in this community, I've been out there to the ER, you know? Do we need to do something at the ER? Yes. But as mayor of the city, is that where's the balance at for the people that that we serve? That's what I'm looking at, where's the balance? I think that what the city manager proposed, and I could tell you in my talking with him, I say, I hate to say he reluctantly proposed it, but I think he would rather have not, he would rather have that three hundred some thousand dollars, uh, uh, that the extra money, I shouldn't say three hundred some thousand, he'd rather have all of that money looking at what he can do that to benefit the citizens of Tarpon. And in my thoughts here, it's fair. It's fair that we contribute and that we look at this in a way of trying to help the hospital and not hurt the city. You know, I know some people not gonna like it, because they're gonna feel like, hey, you should've just went ahead and went with this, don't worry about it, they can make it up, you know, you'll do something in the future, if you, you might not even be here ten years from now, so don't. And I can look at it a lot of ways, and I could do a lot of different spins on it myself, but I choose not to because I want us to look at this as a partnership. but I choose not to because I want us to look at this as a partnership. And I would hope that my colleagues say collectively, we can find some balance in some of these numbers to say, yes, we support you. Then if this is done, the work still is out there. And the work is convincing the people of Tarpon that the decision that was made up here, if it's made up here, was a good one. Because sometime, you go to the people and you say, I got a good thing for you, and they say, nope, I looked at it, it's not good. But I think it's better if we all look at this collectively and say, what do we have? So I just tell you that I can understand the numbers to a certain extent, even though they don't match up with ours, I know what the premise is. I just don't like in a year in the future, whichever one, that we go to a dollar. And that whoever's here have to deal with it, they can. Or what we can start doing is we can start preparing for it by cutting services now, or we can prepare for it by raising taxes now, we can go and ask the people, should we raise taxes? Which was the city manager's idea, that we should go to the people and ask them, should we increase the millage rate by X number of dollars to fund, to help fund the hospital? You know, I guess that's still an option, I guess, I know he would still think that that's a viable option. Should we just ask them flat out, should we increase the millage rate and that money go toward the hospital? So I don't have a problem with that, and I don't have a problem with the scenario of the recommendation that you brought forward. This one here, I just, as much as I look at it, as much as I try to tell myself, I just think that it does future commissions a disservice by making that drastic of decision for them. And I am somewhat skeptical that the people out there, once they see exactly how that money flows, is gonna support it. I know there's some people say, hey, just go and see whatever they're gonna do. But I think it's important that we have a hospital out there, or ER, in the near future, not 10 years from now, but I think we should have one in the near future. So that's kind of where I feel what I feel and, you know, I'm open to whatever motion, somebody got another comment, they wanna go a different way, I just want you to know where I'm at.
I just wanted to make a comment on what you said. You know, the people are gonna vote on this, so whatever we decide, however we go, it has to be something that the people will think is reasonable as well. I mean, you know, you can't, you know, give them something that's gonna be so unreasonable that it's gonna, they're gonna vote no, and then we're back to nowhere. So I think we have to keep in mind, you know, what, you know, we're gonna do for our voters and our citizens and what will they think is reasonable, other than maybe raising the taxes? Or that might be the answer, but...
Well, and I think, you know, I don't know what no words invites me or Larson mouth, because I know he can speak for himself, but he talked about one time, when you take the money away, how do you make it up? So 10 years from now, when you take the money away, what is, who has the answer now besides what Roger said, that, you know, $30,000, $30,000, $30,000? How do you make it up? So that's kind of me, you know, I go this way, you wanna go?
No, you go first, I talk.
Okay.
Um, thank you. And I know the mayor mentioned simple math and mentioned how I've said at previous meetings, if you're taking money away, you gotta somehow add money, somehow you gotta make it all add up. And it is really a matter of simple math. The bottom line, I said this at the work session, I'm gonna say it again now, I just want to make it real clear, the bottom line is that our current revenues that we have as a city, we're not able to meet our current financial obligations. And I, I hope everybody's clear on that. We right now are taking money from reserves to pay our bills. That's where we are as a city right now. So as we talk about different scenarios, we're already in a position where we don't have the revenue coming in to meet our current financial obligations. So when we talk about doing something that's going to commit us to thousands of dollars in some, you know, form or another, all the way out to the year 2040, we need to be clear about where we are right now. The current lease agreement does represent a certain amount of revenue that's coming into the city. So as we adjust that, that means we have less revenue coming in, that money has to come from somewhere. So, you know, if we do go to the residents, if we have a referendum, what does that referendum look like? Do we say to them, in order to help the hospital, we need to increase the millage rate by a certain amount, or we need to take a certain dollar figure from reserves? Because I mean, that's what we're doing right now to balance the budget, is that we're taking money from reserves, but we would have to then increase the amount that we're taking from reserves? Or do we throw it out there that we need to cut certain services? Because that money has to come from somewhere. I definitely, as I said at the work session, I definitely am in support of the hospital, I definitely see the need for the emergency room, and I definitely want to find ways to partner with the hospital as we move forward. One thing that I would like to do, but I understand that it doesn't really help the hospital because of the way the finances work, I would love to make a one-time contribution now and then revisit the issue each budget year. That's what I would like to do, and I understand that that's not useful for the hospital, for their financial reasons, and I get that. Additionally, I would like to simply revisit the issue a couple of years from now, when hopefully, we're no longer taking money from reserves. Because again, that's where we are right now. So I really don't have a very high comfort level, looking at some of these scenarios where we're potentially taking, you know, lowering the lease by, you know, $400,000 after 10 years, or whatever the case may be. It really makes me very nervous when you think about the fact that already, we're not able to meet our financial obligations. And you know, even if we talk about a scenario where to prepare for that, you know, we're gonna take $30,000 and put it aside every single year, I understand the math of that, but we're already taking money from reserves. So that'd be adding an additional $30,000 per year that we'd be taking from reserves. So I think we need to be very serious as we discuss this and understand that the money's gotta come from somewhere. Because I think a lot of the conversation is about, do we want to help the hospital? Yes, we do. Is it a good cause? Yes, it is. And I'm on board, is it our hospital? Yes. You know, is it our building? Yes. And I'm on board with all of that. But I think we need to understand that we've got certain financial obligations that we have to find a way to meet. And if we continue pulling from reserves forever and ever, sooner or later, we run out of money in reserves. Thank you.
My kind of final thoughts on the matter is, when looking at this, you know, I, when we look at this scenario that was proposed tonight, where it continues on for 10 years and stops, again, if we weren't pulling from reserves to balance the budget, and we do have more future revenues coming in than what we can just estimate, it would be a great thing, because it reserves it for 10 years and then we could just worry about them. But then when I ask myself if I can put somebody here in my seat in 10 years, I definitely will not be in the seat in 10 years. I just can't do that. But that being said, I would go back to what has been proposed, which is freezing it at $300,000. And again, that's not instant, they have to build it, it has to be CO'd. So hopefully, by the time that would happen, it would be when we're not borrowing from the reserves anymore, which has been thought to be two to three years from now. And we have the revenue coming in to, to support that. And like when the mayor talks about how we're gonna depend upon our city manager and our finance guy, this is the plan that they have said that, that they feel comfortable enough with, that we did not have to raise taxes or have to cut, you know, services. I'm not even sure, it's too late for me to map in my head, I'm not even sure we could raise taxes according to what, how high we can legally raise them per year to even pay for this, I don't think that's possible. Could be, but I don't think it is. So I would, if you're looking for a motion at this hour, I mean, I would be in favor of motion for what the city manager's plan was, to freeze it at $300,000 when the building is CO'd and have that go out to vote.
May I? May I ask one thing? If we're in agreement on the 1.7 million and Mr. LaCorus, if that number, again, assuming that your finance department agrees to that, I need some, we need some latitude to be able, because we won't have the hospital ready, we won't have the ER open here, and you've said in the past that you won't allow this lease to change until this is a CO. So if we're talking about that bottom line, and you're saying, and Mr. Banther, Commissioner Banther, if you're suggesting that you're comfortable with the 1.7 million dollars or the $2 million, can we focus on what that number is and we can bring that back to the next meeting? Because I need some, I need some time to get everything pulled together. Does that make sense?
I don't understand that.
I do, no. He's saying, and I get it, and I actually caught it, but I'm just tired, he's saying, like, what I just motioned for, in this scenario, and again, I lose track of which chair I'm looking at as far as the hospital. If we look at the city manager's recommendation of freezing it at 300,000, then the hospital, the way they have capitalized the lease, the net contribution from us would be 1,712,778,000. So, you know, but then we're saying, you know, they don't, that would not start until they get CO'd. So again, I'm not in the construction business.
Let me clarify, that was again, something I said I think you should do. I didn't, I mean, I think you should do that, because obviously, we wouldn't start it and have it there. I just don't understand what the difference of the number is. I just don't.
Because it would be less, they would get less.
It would be less than the 1.7, Mr. LaCorus.
The difference is, it starts now or it starts in two years from now when the ER is CO'd.
Right.
That's showing it in 2017.
Right.
Right? And the difference is, if the ER is not constructed until 2018, then there's the current lease value, which in 2018 is 348, versus 300,000. So it's just the difference of when the hospital, when the ER is CO'd or not. Mr. Bergen's saying the 1.7 is reflective of 2016 to 2017, you're at 300,000, which is not what we talked about. We talked about when it's CO'd, freezing the lease at the 300,000.
Okay. I just say this, that first of all, is that we got, we're playing with two sets of numbers. And, you know, once y'all can figure that out, I don't know what is here, but what I say playing with two sets of numbers is that when the city manager, and I think our finance people look at it, they look at the lease reduction being 3,000, 3,167,000. That says it's 4 million something, so that's how you get to that, that value down there. So if you look at some type of way, there's gotta be a meeting of the mind of how much money that we're talking about.
Exactly.
And I don't know whether we can do it tonight in terms of what the, you think the present value of this 3,167,000 is. I don't know. I mean, finance people, if y'all could figure out what that would be to tell him that number, and I don't know why we would have to do it tonight, I don't know why y'all can't get together tomorrow and figure out if you did the $300,000, unless there's something else.
Are we talking about just changing that first number to 300 instead of there? Is that what you're talking about?
No.
What, I mean...
Well, I think there was a difference between what we did in our graph and what Mr. Bergen's got, and that 300,000 under city manager recommendation, he's got 300,000, ours had 341,000. I know that's one little variance there. And I know the mayor's talking about the difference between present value and I think, sometimes I think we need to stick with, it's the city's money, we need to do it how we do our money on a cash basis. You know, the general fund is on a cash basis, government accounting for general funds is on a cash basis. So I don't know if we need to concentrate on, we're doing it, it's city money, on the city money, on how we account for it. You know, I know with the hospital, they do the net present value at September, well, whatever their fiscal year is, and that's when they calculate the present value as of that date. But I think we need to be sticking with how the city accounts for it on a cash value. Not sure if that helps any or not at 11 o'clock at night, but...
Well, you know, I'm trying to look at that level, because there's some rules that they have that I haven't had to deal with about going past the level.
So just tell me real fast, Ron, so I'm gonna talk to you, because you talk my numbers. The thing they put, am I correct with the thing they put in error on there, that first year under city manager is supposed to be the...
The same number here.
Yes, because they wouldn't have the emergency room CO'd yet.
Then that number would be yeah.
Yeah.
You have it in Excel, you can change it.
The challenge is, it takes 18 months to build this building, and that's gonna cross over two years. The foundation, Hospital Foundation, has to go out and raise the money. So each year that this goes by, that contribution that you think you're making toward the hospital is not actually coming across. So if the, if the, if the commission is saying, we're willing to commit to a $2 million capital contribution, a 1.7 million contribution, Mark and I can sit down in the next day or so, and we can come up with that, what that number is. Again, and I can, you know, there's no games being played with how these numbers are arrived at, and we can bring in the finance director. So whatever that number is, I just need some latitude to be able to get the, to...
Listen, let me make this simple. I'll tell you what, the reason, the only reason I put on the condition about building the emergency room and not paying it till you do, is I don't have the exact faith that's gonna be done. You can always put in the ballot language that you have two years to do it to get that money, and you can leave it at 300,000 all the way through, but guarantee in the ballot language, you're gonna build it within two years. I don't even mind giving you that 300 instead of the 341, if you guarantee within two years you're gonna have that thing built.
And you do that?
I can't tonight, Commissioner Banther. Mr. LaCorus, I can't. I mean, it's not physically, you can't get this project approved by ACHA and built in two years. It's impossible.
Okay, all right.
But again, the recommendation, the recommendation about the CO on it, that was the recommendation. I mean, if you as a commission don't want to put, want to put a three-year time, want to put something else, you could do that in there and stuff.
What about, what about, and I'll look to you, because I'm gonna have to look to everybody here to say that you won't, you have to do a motion to continue after 11 o'clock, I know y'all not used to that. But there's a little rule that we can't continue passing level without, you know, the...
You need a simple majority vote.
Y'all wanna do that some of... Roll call?
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. And I just say this, can we look at, and y'all have to agree to it at some point in time, when I say y'all, from our finance people to you, to our lawyer, to, can you put it in escrow? You know, I mean, it starts, but it's in escrow. You can't really get it physically until it's done. I mean, can we do something like that to satisfy what you want, but to satisfy the wishes of, you don't have the money until you do it?
I'm happy, I'm happy to be as creative as I can, Mr. Mayor.
I don't know, I'm just throwing it out.
I just, I just think it's important to know, what are we working toward? What number are we working toward? Is it the 1.7? Is it the $2 million in capital contribution by the city? Is that's the commitment to the city? Or is it, if you could give me that number, I can have that number to Mr. LaCorus tomorrow.
This, the number that I have, unless Mr. Herron, Mr. LaCorus tell me differently, the number that I thought we was working with is the total of 3,167,000. Now, you ain't gonna see that over here. But that's what all this was here, that they gave us. And I, that's what I'm saying, we're reading from two different scripts. And this is what they're recommending right here.
But they can appoint that in the later terms, and that's the number.
And you can take this number and plug it into what it would be for as present value. And that don't work right, I guess we could, at the next, do something, I don't know.
I mean, I, if I get it up though, if I can speak, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I know I have my motion out there, but I wasn't thinking, and, and Bruce brought the point that, you know, what are we talking about? But we do have to go, as much as I love talking about capitalized leases, we do have to go by our own accounting system, and I understand that. So I say I would, you know, I'm not sure if you're looking for a motion, if you are, I'll do it again. I would motion that we would do what the city manager has proposed with the lease reduction un- under, under cash value, under the cash basis of, of accounting, is three million, one sixty, uh, and then, uh, the one, uh, five seven. That's on, that's in our backup on our, on, on our documents. And then how, then however, the, the powers that be wanna do where, cause I do think it is important that there's some reassurance, escrow, whatever, however that's done can be done afterwards. But I think if we can commit to that number and then let, let Mark and Bruce and all of them decide, how do we get it to where, 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 where is the money go until the hospital's CO'd? That, that's what I would feel comfortable with, and that's going by our recommendation from our city manager, from our finance director, in the sense that they feel comfortable with these numbers. And find some way, I would try and propose, but it's way too late for me to think about it, how we would reserve the funds where they wouldn't have access to, 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 to it until, um, you know, it, it, it would, it would, it would, it would, it would CO. That's, that's, that's where I'm at.
The only problem I have is, that's probably not gonna be a nice even, three hundred thousand is a number. I mean, I don't know if we're talking about that, and that number is gonna be two ninety-seven, I mean.
Well, I'm just pulling off your number here, that's all. I mean, I don't, do you want me to use a different number?
Yeah, well, I think, if, if, and this is trying to clarify, I think that you're saying that this is the bottom line number, the number that you have. They have to figure out what that is in present value, that, that's what their number is. You don't have to change anything. That, this is the number, three million, one hundred sixty, one fifty-seven. And whatever that is in present value, cause it, I think last meeting, we had it in present value, I thought, but, and that was one point six something, but I don't know.
Yeah, it was one point six is the number, and they got the one point seven, cause they added the three hundred thousand.
So, but y'all could figure that out, right?
I mean, I'll have to figure out.
I mean, here it is. That number's, that, that's wrong, my recommendation up there. So it's really, somebody has one of those old sheets, we keep all those old sheets. It's one, six, and whatever change it was on the, on the old sheet that you have from them, the sheet they presented to you last week. I mean, that's the bottom line number for them.
But I think it's important that we motion or suggest, or you wanna say based on our accounting. I, I respect, understand how they do theirs with a, with a, with a, with a capitalized lease, but we have to motion based on our accounting, then, then they can take that, you know, that's the, the contribution that, uh, that, uh, that.
I, I might suggest to you also to, to take the high math out of it. At, at, at its core, what we're talking about here is a, is a lease amendment, right? So the lease amendment calls for X amount of base times a multiplier of two percent. So the way that it's going to be presented to the voters is, you know, I'm paraphrasing, of course, but do you wish to amend the lea- the lease with, with, uh, the less C to make the rent this much, right? That's, that's functionally how it's going to work, and that's how it's going to be presented to the voters. So in terms of making a motion to get, we need to, need to get it to some kind of final form, uh, the motion might be to, um, you know, Mark's proposed here a flat, you know, a flat number.
I think that's what Commissioner Banther's, uh, trying to make. Three hundred thousand, and Commissioner Banther doesn't want the two percent in there anymore. He wants to make flat of three hundred thousand, I believe.
That's my proposal. That's what I, I propose. But I just don't understand what these numbers are, I'm supposed to give them on, or not.
No, we're, it's given them on as far as, you know, we, we, we talk, well, I guess.
Again, it's at the point of CO. You wanna put in that they, that this goes into effect at the time of CO, you don't have to put that in there.
No, I, I, I think it needs to be in there.
It's gotta be, I, I mean, it's gotta be. So the faster they build it, the, I mean, that number will change. If they don't CO it for four years, that money on both their accounting and our accounting is gonna be less than this.
Well, you, you also need to account for the fact that it may not get built at all. I mean, not, not, no, no defense intended, but you, you, things happen in business all the time. Sometimes, you know, what you expect to happen doesn't happen.
That's the point.
Right, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I don't, don't eliminate that requirement altogether.
Well, and then I, I go to you, but my, my thoughts is that if the money is placed in escrow, they're not gonna get it. It's theirs, but they have to do certain things to get it. When they get the CO, whatever that is, they will get the money. I mean, you know, um, so I, I would think they could still write off or reduce that lease by that amount, because they're actually getting it. Not that they're gonna get it in two thousand eighteen, but they're getting it whenever the voters basically approve it for that year. That money will be set aside, it'll still be in our account, but it's theirs that we will give it to. I, I don't.
Doesn't work like that.
Well, I, I mean, it could work like that, it might not work like that, but it could work any way we want it to work, that's what I'm saying, you know?
I haven't asked you to speak.
Yeah, yes, sir, go ahead.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, sir.
Would you reiterate your motion, please?
Okay, I, and then I have to just gather again, and, and then, um, the Mr. Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong with this motion. I would motion that we take, uh, that we freeze the lease at three hundred thousand dollars upon CO. In very basic language. Accounting systems on both sides can be, can be what, 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 what they are.
Second.
Any other comment? Roll, roll call.
Commissioner Seaver?
May I make a comment, please? In order for the auditors to relieve this liability, it has to be a definitive number at some point in time. If I don't make that, if I don't make whatever date you establish, you know, then, then it doesn't come to fruition there. But I've gotta have a number that auditors say, this, this lease is either diminished or decreased or eliminated by such a date so that we can establish what the present value is. The present value in the audited financial statements that we give to the city every year that you've accepted is six point one million dollars as of last year, twelve thirty-one fourteen. It's reduced every year by percentage, by a present value amount of that. I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to.
So is that something that y'all can determine? As long as we say that we're gonna freeze it at a, at, reduce it and freeze it, freeze it at three hundred thousand dollars, subject to a CO of the new ER facility, is that enough to get us to where you and the finance director and Mr. Burgum can work that out prior to our next meeting?
No, that doesn't make any sense. I mean, they're the ones who determine what, what that, the, the final number is by when they do the emergency room, whether it's ten years or what, they determine the final number. Um, you're making it complicated, take someone, put it in.
Can, 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 can I, I, I still ask that y'all get together and y'all look at, can the money be set aside in escrow not to be released until there's a CO? It, it's still not gonna go anywhere.
But that wouldn't be the mo- that wouldn't follow the motion that you've got.
What, what I'm saying, if you're trying to, if you're trying to take into consideration what he's saying, if you're trying to do that. If not, then let's just vote, because in my mind, in order for the thing to work, you gotta say that you're reducing it by this time, not, it's gonna be reduced by this time at the point that there's a CO. That, at that point, whether it's two years, three years, four years, five years. Yeah, you know, I mean, and I'm not, definitely, you could check in, cause you are our attorney, you know? Yes, ma'am.
So do we need to wait until the figures are in to, to make a decision?
I would say the figures gonna change, I just think it's, it's a matter of how and when they're gonna get the money. I think that's where we at, but, you know, but there is a motion on the floor. And I have called for the question, I have allowed you to say something. We need to go ahead and, and deal with the motion there, cause I don't know how to, to get where Mr. Burgum wants to go. I, I made a suggestion, it doesn't seem like that's the one, so.
So the motion on the floor is to approve the city manager proposal of three hundred thousand dollars conditioned upon a CO. Is that?
Yeah, voter referendum.
Yeah, that's what we.
And the reduction in your freezing the lease.
We will bring that back when we bring, the next two meetings would be the ordinance, the actual language to bring forward the next two meetings that the city attorney.
And at that point, I feel like you can identify for Mr. Burgum, whatever that number is, one way or another, whether it's incorporating with the mayor saying that, you know, the, the, the difference between three hundred thousand and the current lease value of three forty-one or three forty-eight in year eighteen, or three fifty-five in year two thousand nineteen, the difference between three hundred thousand and whatever the current lease value is when they get a CO, you know, I think what the mayor's saying is that, that portion can be escrowed.
Right.
Okay.
That, just that portion. Every year, that's set aside, take as long as you want to. You know, I, it, because you're not gonna get the money until you do something.
But the details, I feel like y'all can work out in between this meeting and our next meeting. As long as we're all on the same page in understanding the motion and the second, and what, what's on the floor is that the lease is to be reduced and freeze to three hundred thousand dollars from point of CO until the expiration of the lease, conditioned on voter referendum, approval of voter referendum. Got all that?
Yeah. I mean, I, I was hearing Commissioner Seaver say something.
That wasn't the motion on the floor as I heard it.
Well, I, do you read what you heard?
I have to approve the city manager's proposal of three hundred, three hundred thousand dollars conditioned upon a CO. Now, if that's incorrect.
Am I wrong, you could approve that, and then you got ballot language to approve? And we'll figure between that with the attorney what the ballot language is, that you got it approved in two readings of an ordinance.
Commissioner Banther, is that not correct?
Yes, that, 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 that is correct. I don't, I, I mean, yes, that's correct.
So what I'm understanding, you say that we're gonna freeze the lease at three hundred thousand, none of that money is released until the CO. That's what I hear you saying.
It wouldn't be released, because you're, yeah, you're, you're still paying, we're not releasing any money.
I'm paying the full amount, but you're gonna reserve the difference between three hundred in that and, and whatever the current schedule is, the difference is gonna be escrowed, and that money will go toward this project.
That's what I would propose.
I, I would amend my motion to include that escrow clause. It's, it's too late for me to figure out what that wording should be, but that, but I'm fine with that. The mayor and, and Commissioner Terrapini have said it, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm perfectly fine with that, that they, they, that, that still holds the principle, that they don't get the, the, the relief, um, of debt or money, however you wanna look at it, until it's opened. So yes, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that.
And if it takes me five years to open it, it's retro to that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not gonna take five years now, the city manager, cause you gotta raise that money out there, you know? Mr. Mark, give me raised money, or trauma's ten years from now.
I'm gonna motion that, she has to not motion this again, and again, if anybody can chime in if I'm not saying this correctly. I would motion that we freeze the lease payments at three hundred thousand dollars. And that until the, um, emergency room is CO'd, that difference between what they're so, what, what they're currently paying, that three hundred thousand is put in escrow, and they, and they receive that relief once it's CO'd.
Commissioner?
Yes?
Please, look at my sheet.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm talking based off my colleagues here.
Yeah, but, but if you see mine, there's no, they pay the normal amount of lease payment in next year. Are you changing that?
No, I was going off with the, the mayor and Commissioner Terrapini.
It's, it starts just like you say, except that whenever it starts, it goes in the escrow until, until it's CO'd. Whenever, you, you gotta start in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, but they don't get that, cause it's not gonna be open.
They don't get the forty-eight thousand.
No, no, they get that.
Or the fifty-five, or the seventy, until then.
It seems like they're gonna pay us, and we hold that money.
I'm just saying, they're, they have got an extra drop in there up there, that's what I'm saying.
I'm going based off, I said based off our cash basis, accounting in our back.
I'm good.
I read this out of the city guy.
I just have to get Bruce to put my things up there.
The CO is here.
No, no.
You got it, Michelle.
Uh, close enough.
I hope you had to rely on the tape.
No, I think I got it. Do we repeat it?
Sure, why not?
To freeze the three hundred thousand dollars until ER is CO'd, a difference to be put in escrow relief based on city manager's recommendation.
Which is in the back.
I got it.
Two, two referendums.
Well, that's, that's a given, that we can't do it without.
Right. Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, roll call, again, roll call.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
No.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Um, that, I believe concludes our agenda for this evening.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, all, Mr. Chief?
No comments, Mayor.
Oh, Attorney? City manager?
I'll make sure I brush up on my economics and math.
South clerk? Commissioner Banther?
I wanna thank our clerk, Michelle, here, while she is, took a joke, I said wrongly that she shouldn't have been here. I was saying, I said, I said she's thinking, I read this, I read this again, for her defense, not that I didn't think she'd be a clerk.
Vice Mayor?
I've said enough.
Oh, oh, you know, that's like, who are these people down here, this is? Uh, Commissioner Terrapini?
Comments, Mayor.
Oh, Commissioner Seaver?
Okay, last night, this Saturday night on the docks, you event.
Oh, I don't have anything, I think that's level sixteen, and I hope I can convince my, my wife that I was at a commission meeting till this time.
She should be watching live streaming.
Oh, yeah, I, I guarantee you, she's not watching the live streaming. I, I should tell her that sometime.
Jurisdiction rate, and, and only sort of zero right now, Matt.
Let's see.